All right, we will now reconvene the Lompoc City Council meeting for June 6th, 2023. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Malavi, was there any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor and Council, City Council met in closed session to discuss the labor negotiations item on the closed session agenda. The Council had a discussion about that with staff, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Please join Chaplain Greg Nelson for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Dear God, it is my honor to call upon you tonight and to pray on behalf of our city leaders and for our city itself. We know that you are always ready and eager to hear our prayers, our cries, and our concerns, just as to hear our gratefulness and our thanksgiving for all that you provide for us. Help our hearts and minds to focus on what is best, right, moral, helpful, and kind. Help us to be encouraged by what you are doing in our midst and remind us that we are not alone, for you are with us. Information can come so quickly at us without wisdom, but fill the City Council and our city employees with your wisdom. Help us to identify the goodness of others in our town who serve without press or accolades, but who make a difference in the lives of others simply because they decide to. Protect those who protect us, watch over our military, keep our police, our fire personnel safe, our city crews safe as they care for and serve our community. We are grateful for the recent upgrades to our parks, the painting of our police station. We ask lastly that you be with our young people as the school year comes to a close. May these graduations be marked with accomplishment. Enjoy it as we pray for guidance for our seniors in the next phase of their lives. Guide the conversations in the meeting tonight that we might continue to move our city forward in the direction that pleases you. In your powerful name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to invite our library director, Sarah Blal, to present about the summer reading program that has been put together at the library.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's June, so it must be summer reading time at the library. So excited to be able to talk to you a little bit about our program tonight. It's actually started on June 1st, so we've already had some people sign up. And it goes through July 31st. We have programs for all ages, and we are once more back 100% in person after the last interesting couple of years we've had. We also are happy to announce we have lunch at the library again. This is something we work with the State Library and with the school district to provide lunches on the library youth patio Monday through Friday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. This is good for children, or teens and children 18 and under. And all they need to do is just show up, they will get a free meal. And so we are all inviting the entire community to participate this summer. Our theme is Find Your Voice, and we have a goal of reaching 100,000 minutes read. I know that seems like a lot, but already, okay, how many minutes are in a day? 1440. So today's the 6th of June, so that means it's about 8,600 minutes. Well, we've had 220 people already sign up for summer reading, and they have read almost 14,000 minutes in the last six days. So I think we're going to hit that 100. I would love to hit 200,000. So read, it's very easy to track your minutes, or come in and we will help track them for you. You get a free book for signing up, this is all ages. So we have books for the babies that they can't destroy, we've got books for kids and teens and adults. We have different programs all year long, and if you finish your goal of 600 minutes per person, you get to enter in to win a grand prize. So we do have four age groups, we have early learners, and they are not required to read, you can read to them. Or even better, if you can get one of your kids or grandkids to read to each other, it counts for both of them. We have kids 6 to 12, teens 13 to 17, and adults are 18 and over. And we have prizes for each of those age groups. So why, why do we read? There's a couple of different reasons. The big one, though, is to support a literate community. So we all want to read, we want kids to see us reading. We want to help kids and teens retain and enhance their reading skills during the summer months. There's a very real thing called the summer slide, and it affects kids every year if they are not using their brains during the summertime. We also provide access to free books and programs that will enrich the community. And this is all 100% free of charge for people to come in and use the library, get free books. Our friends at the library are a big supporter of this program. Every year we are given money from them that they have fundraised at their book sales. So thank you, the community, for supporting our friends at the library. And we also have a grant this year from the State Library that's funding a lot of different programs for our lunch at the library and a lot of the free books we're going to be giving away. So last year, we had 347 participants read over 155,000 minutes. So that's like me sitting down and reading nonstop for 108 days. No sleep, no eating, no going to work. Actually, that sounds kind of nice. Well, maybe not the not sleepy part. So I think we can do it again this year. So for events, we do have our calendar up already, and you can go to our catalog to get that, you can go to the website to get that. You can also follow us on Facebook or Instagram, and we will be advertising programs as they come up. So I am going to tell you about a few things you might not know that we have at the library. Did you know that we have California State Library Parks passes? These can be checked out, this is with a grant that we got from the State Library. They are free to check out. So if you are going to a state park, if you're going to La Presima and you don't want to pay for the parking, you can come check out one of the passes and it will let you in free to park. There's over 200 locations, so you can check out the state parks all across California. And we have about 30 passes, so they're good for a week, just come check one out or put one on hold. We also just recently got a Moxie museum pass, and I know this is a little bit of a drive, it's in Santa Barbara. But we have a community partnership with them, so we were able to get a pass. It's good for one week, and it covers the admission for two adults and five children. So put it on hold, check it out, go check out the Moxie this summer. Also, another grant we got to go along with the Parks passes are the State Library backpacks. So these have lots of fun things that you can learn. If you check one out, you can go out into nature and you can learn all about the birds and the flowers and how to use a compass. There's lots of great stuff in there. And we actually just got another grant from the state, and we're going to be doing some more of these backpacks with more fun things for you to do outdoors with your family. So Brainfuse is one of our online resources that we have, again, through the State Library. And there is a summer skills camp that you can go online. So if you are okay with having your kids on the computer, there's lots of fun things, there's games they can play, they can brush up on their math and reading skills. Again, this is all free of charge. And one of the most exciting things that's happened, actually just today they announced this. So Dolly Parton has what she calls the Imagination Library, and it's been around for several years, and it's been in other states, but not in California until recently. And basically, her foundation partners with a local group to give away children, give away books to children every month from birth to age five, no matter what their income level is. So the partner for Lompoc is the United Way of Northern Santa Barbara County. And if you get on that QR code right now, you can actually sign your kid up right now if you want it. They have books available in both English and Spanish, and we're really excited because this helps children build their own library. And having books that they have been reading their whole lives just does them worlds of good once they get into school. So we're really excited. This is through the State Library that we're able to offer this and through Dolly Parton's foundation. And it broke. Oh, last one, I guess. Is there any questions? Sorry about that.
Sure, so you showed a QR code, you said if you get it on it right now, where else can they find the QR code?
It is on our catalog.
All right, so is it going to be online somewhere?
Yes.
That if they go to the landing page for the library, maybe it'll be on the homepage or something? So you can grab it other places, not just at this meeting?
Not just at this meeting, no. And you can always call too, if you're like, what's the QR code? Give us a call, we will get you sorted out, I promise.
Great, great. Councilmember Ball.
I'll be real quick. Thank you for the presentation and for offering all those amazing things for our kids. I just wanted you to repeat a couple of things because I'm literally going to say the word inflation. Busting inflation is on everyone's minds because food cost is higher, et cetera, et cetera. Free lunch during the summer for teens and kids, can you repeat those details? Because that's, I have 11 months old, and he eats, it's costing us money, so I'm just, maybe you could repeat those details.
Yes, so we did this before COVID, and we haven't had a chance to do it since. But we are offering lunch at the library Monday through Friday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. for children ages 0 through 18. You don't need to show any proof, any ID or anything, it's the school district is providing the lunches. We're simply a site for that to happen. We work with the school district and with the State Library to also provide like art activities for them to do and books, free books to give away.
Awesome, well, big kudos to you and to the school district, I think that's a really big deal. And so for those of you that know people out there that are, you know, living week to week, months to months, they have kids, they're raising them, maybe put this on their radar, this is a great opportunity to save a few bucks, and maybe the kids can have a good time at the library. So thank you for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, did you write them? So the key for me is it's that we're back in full swing. The library is such a sanctuary and safe place for many families, not just kids, but families during the summer. Those that may not have air conditioning, like myself, I grew up in a house without air conditioning, so we went to the library because it was the most comfortable building, and as a result, I'm a voracious reader because I'm surrounded by books. The fact that we're providing meals and working with the school district, the fact that we're providing programs and maintaining those reading skills through the summer, because as the daughter of a teacher, you realize that over the summer, their skills slip. And so as much as we can keep it in hand, and finally, last but not least, so excited that the Dolly Parton Books in the Home program is being brought to Lompoc, that makes a difference. I still have many of my childhood books, even though I don't have any children, and I still love having those books I read as a child around. So please take advantage of this. This is an amazing opportunity, no matter what your socioeconomic level is. The more we participate, the more we show how much we use the library, the easier it is for us to justify funding it, given we're in the middle of a budget talk. So thank you so very much for that, and keep up the great work, and tell your staff, great, great job.
Thank you.
All right. I know that for some, you may not want to be known, but for those of you that are an ally or LGBTQ, if you are here and would like to join me for the Pride proclamation, you are welcome to come forward. I also completely respect if you like to keep that to yourself and not promote it. What I do is very open, and I want to share with you recognizing Pride Month this month. Whereas for over 50 years, June has been a symbolic month in which the LGBTQ plus community, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and intersex plus, community members and supporters come together in a variety of celebrations of pride and social justice. And whereas the city of Lompoc has a diverse LGBTQ plus community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and professions, whose leadership is vital to the LGBTQ plus movement. And communities are stronger when all people, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, or sex characteristics, are fully recognized as free and equal members of their society. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Lompoc who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community. And whereas June 28th, 2023, is the 54th anniversary of the Stonewall riots. During these riots, LGBTQ plus citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional, but their fight is far from over as they continue to experience hate-filled discrimination and violence. And whereas 2023 has seen a record number of anti-LGBTQ plus laws as state and local legislatures have already introduced over 600 hateful laws targeting the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas Pride is a celebration of generations of LGBTQ people who have fought bravely to live openly and authentically, and it is a reminder that we will still have generational work to do to ensure that everyone enjoys the full promise of equity, dignity, protection, and freedom. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the Pride flag or Gay Pride Flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of pride in recognizing LGBTQ plus social movements. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby declare the month of June as Pride Month in the city of Lompoc and invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and recognizing Pride Month during the month of June. And I also want to take this opportunity to remind the public that the Live to Ride group is coming through town, they arrive on Thursday. It is their shortest day of riding down the coast of central California, raising awareness about AIDS and other issues within the community. They love visiting our community because we have been so supportive and helpful to them. It is their shortest day, so they get to relax and enjoy our weather, and so we hope the rain clears up for them. So just remember, you'll see extra cyclists, bicyclists on the road. Be a little slower on Friday morning if you're commuting south, because they will depart throughout the morning to head south as they finish their ride up in Los Angeles on Saturday. So it is this month that they celebrate that, it is this month that we celebrate Pride Month, and I am an ally. I have family that are transgender, and I feel it's very important that from our leadership, they show and feel welcomed in our community. So thank you all for that. Mr. Albro, City Manager, report please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to encourage everybody to take the survey for College Park, for the playground design. It closes June 9th, this Friday. So far, we've had 582 people already take the survey, so I encourage you to give your input. I also wanted to let everybody know that the Parks Recs and you heard about the library activities throughout the summer. I wanted to encourage everybody to participate in the golf tournament that will be July 14th, and that'll be hosted by the Parks and Rec Division and the Kiwanis at the Mission Club Golf Course. Now I'd like to turn it over to Kristi Allercon, our Community Development Director, to introduce a new staff member.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. I'm Kristi Allercon, your Community Development Director, and I'd like to introduce to you our newest member of the Community Development Management Team. I thought he was behind me. Matt Wyatt joined the Community Development Department in April of this year to serve as our Building Edits Safety Manager. Matt is a Certified Building Official and Flood Plane Manager. He spent over 22 years with the County of Ventura Building and Safety Department, starting as a Building Inspector and ending his time as Deputy Building Official. Matt holds many certifications, including Combination Building Inspector, Certified Building Official, Flood Plane Manager, and also helpful Code Enforcement Officer. We are happy to have Matt with his experience and background as part of the city team. So join me in welcoming Matt Wyatt, our new City of Lompoc Building and Safety Manager. And if Matt would like to say a few words, I'll give him the mic.
Thank you, Kristi. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for welcoming me to the city. I look forward to serving the residents of the City of Lompoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Consent Calendar. If you would like to speak to an item on Consent Calendar, now is your time, you have three minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium. Madam Clerk, did we have any written comment on Consent Calendar?
No ma'am, nothing.
All right. While we wait to see if anyone calls, I'll read Consent Calendar process into record. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one called in, we will close public comment on consent, oh. Only for Consent Calendar. Only on the Consent Calendar. All right, so seeing no one rise for a comment on Consent Calendar, we will close that and bring it back to Council for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to poll item two.
Poll item two. And we will move that to right before oral communications, item two. All right, any other questions or polls by Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion for item one and three.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Councilmember Ball, item one and three moved, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion for item one and three to be adopted, moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes 5-3. We will discuss item two just before oral communications near the end of the meeting. 5-0, sorry. I was busy talking and thinking in my head, I needed to restate when we would say, get back to item two, so there we go. So item two, it passed 5-0, and we'll talk item two at the end of the meeting. Seeing no staff presentations, announcements, or requests, we'll move on to general oral communications. This is if it is not on the agenda already, or you cannot stay for that item, now is that time to come forward and speak on an item if you have three minutes. And you may also call in at 805-875-8201. The floor is open, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Joel Barajas, resident of City of Lompoc. A woman in minority-led partnership joined their skills, resources, and finances to start a small cannabis business, Yesca Dispensary. Our path to open our store has included rigorous compliance with all the regulations and requirements set forth. This process is filled with expenditures that we have anticipated and planned for, but our project has come to a stop by an unexpected and hidden costly expenditure in the form of an impact fee. Any business owner would want to understand a proposed $101,000 impact fee. In our case, particularly being first-time potential business owners, we were taken aback to learn that a building permit will not be issued until this fee is paid. This fee has halted our project indefinitely and is costing time and money. We have worked together with Lompoc City staff and engineers to understand how these fees are calculated, and more importantly, when they are applied. The city staff recommended we approach City Council for further resolution on such heavy fee. Our attention turned to the previous tenant, Compound Gym, out of the same building warehouse at 432 Commerce Court, which had a zero impact fee assessed in May 2018 by the City of Lompoc. Compound Gym was being operated under conditional use permit, just like our proposed dispensary, which also holds a cut. Our dispensary is only a tenant improvement with no other addition of square footage, not a new development. Currently, the Lompoc engineers are using the IT Trip Generation Manual 10th Edition to calculate the impact fees. Under this manual, it is our opinion that the code 770 Business Park should be applied to our building, which sits on a business park zone. We believe the Business Park code to calculate impact fee should be applied to our project. This rating would place us in line with current metrics according to the IT manual, and would lower the assessed impact fee to $482. Lompoc City has supported no impact fees in past years, and many other cities in California like Dublin and Citrus Heights do not impose impact fees for tenant improvements that result in no increase in square footage. We are strong supporters of small and local business creations such as our proposed dispensary in this free market. We are excited to become part of the Lompoc small business community and support our local government through the contributions of our statements and tax obligations. We aim to continue to support the growth and prosperity of Lompoc, Santa Barbara County, and our great state of California. Thank you for your time and your service to our city.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. David Hutzbach, a member of citizens of Lompoc. And I would like to lodge a protest against the financial expenditures presentation, presentment information. So I do hereby lodge a protest against the publication of an incomplete list of city expenditures detailed as City Managers' Report. The consistent and incomplete detail to normally accompany these financial numbers is missing and leaves the taxpayer citizens with a scant little explanation of where their tax dollars are being spent. This is not okay, and we, the taxpayers, citizens, are entitled to a more complete accounting than is currently being put forth. A better job is owed to the citizens and needs to be followed up and provided by your staff, the City Manager. What I am observing is a slow and ever-increasing failure to communicate with those that have entrusted you with the governance of this city and its inner workings. Tenbits of information do not count as transparency, nor do they count towards credibility. If any report is worth putting forth in print, then it's worth the efforts to be complete. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joey Gamar. I own Transcendence Winery here in town. Transcendence owns a property downtown as well as rents a property downtown. Many of you guys know me up there, and you know that I'm very committed to the city of Lompoc. I give back tenfold, I do a lot of community fundraising. I'm here tonight because I'm frustrated about the homeless situation. For the past month, I've watched a whole village being built next to the airport. I've seen a truck show up full of lumber, put sawhorses down, cut wood, and build structures right there on the riverbed. Multiple days later, I'm seeing them put beds in there. I see a constant flow of shopping carts, trash, I've seen fires go by there. I cannot, as a business owner, change a toilet in my building without getting a permit. I can't even plant plants without letting you guys know what I'm going to plant. I'm threatened with thousands of dollars, or I have been threatened with thousands of dollars, if I have any kind of water hit the storm drains from the skateboard or from the storm drain. I don't have young kids anymore, but I would not feel safe allowing my kids to walk down to Blender's to get juice while I'm shopping without being harassed by vagrants that are begging and smoking in front of the doors. My tasting room facility is vandalized daily, they dig through our trash, they steal everything, even things that are bolted down. It's not uncommon to find human fecal matter on the deck, and I can no longer keep my bathrooms open from the constant traffic going to the riverbed on this. open from the constant traffic going to the riverbed on this side of town. I'm frustrated, I'm disgusted, and even though I pay almost $18,000 a year in property taxes, I can't vote because I'm not a citizen here. I live in the village. I want you to know that this selective enforcement of these laws is not only unconstitutional, it undermines the safety of our town, the rule of law, and the very fabric of our social contract. You need to shut it down. We cannot have villages that are just having these structures being built. It is not fair to us, it's not safe for our citizens, it's not safe for our firefighters, and it's not safe for our police officers. It's a joke. Because myself and many other businesses and citizens, it no longer feels like the thriving town that we want it to be. It feels like we should go somewhere else that where a town respects the rule of law. I hope you guys can really address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I see many new faces, and I see some old faces, and it's a polite reminder that while you may agree with someone, clapping doesn't encourage public comments. So we ask that you refrain from clapping. If you must show support, maybe a silent wave of hands, but clapping can discourage someone with an opposing opinion, not in this scenario, but an opposing opinion from potentially getting up. And the last thing we want to do is stop somebody from sharing their polite comment. All right, do we still have someone online? All right.
Good evening, you're live in the Longpoke City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Okay, hello, hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council and city staff. I would like to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Duval. I am calling in on behalf of Yeska Dispensary. I would like to point out first and foremost that the Yeska Dispensary project is a tenant improvement on an existing building, and we are not expanding any square footage, which is what usually prompts a higher impact fee. To my surprise, we were imposed with an impact fee of $101,000. And after discussions with the Longpoke Engineering Department, it was recommended that we come before the members of the council to request an alteration on the impact fee. A review of the City of Longpoke report found that a very small percentage of the applications were from Latina applicants, and less than 10% of the applications were by women. Extra grants to help women and minority members to start cannabis businesses were available by the state of California, and many cities applied and received those grants. Many cities provide extra grants and assistance to help women and minority members to start cannabis businesses, including prioritizing licensing. Even though we received no such grants from the City of Longpoke, I am requesting that the council consider applying the 770 Business Park Code from the I.T.E. Trip Generation Manual 10th Edition, which is a true reflection of our project based on where it is owned, which results in a reasonable fee being applied. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for your service to the City of Longpoke.
Thank you. Any other calls? Seeing none, we will, seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications. Quickly, before we move on, oral communications don't allow us to have a conversation with your public comment because some of the requests were very specific. I want to make sure and share the information so all can hear it. For those requesting council consider a change or an appeal, there is an appeal process, so be sure and talk with city staff about what the appeal process, so that we can take it up. We can't take it up without a formal request for an appeal. So there is a process. You can contact the city clerk, and she can direct you on how to put the appeal together and how to get it on our agenda so that we can consider those requests. To the gentlemen concerned about incomplete city manager report with those numbers, that comment was heard at earlier meetings. It is now part of the public document that is posted to our city website. So while you may not see it on the agenda, the expanded link is under, the agenda's listed under this month. When you go to the homepage of the city website, click on the city meeting, you're brought up to all the agenda components, and I believe it's the first or second item that has the full and complete list. Council gets a printed copy. They are now putting it on for transparency for the public. So it is there. What you see on the agenda is usually just a synopsis like everything else, but the expanded document is there. And yes, we are unfortunately dealing with homeless issues that while on public properties, our hands are tied, given Ninth Circuit rules, and we are doing our best to work within those, to try and address the situations with all our partners. Anytime you are aware of something, now that we do have a code enforcement officer, we ask that you file that in case you are our eyes and ears and we haven't seen what's going on, so that we can use the team we have created internally to work with both our code enforcement or our Parks and Recs Department or Police and Fire, as well as bringing those outside entities that are working on mental health, public health, addictions, housing issues. We are working as best we can with the tools with which we are limited to. So your eyes and ears on situations we may not see readily can easily be reported on code enforcement, and we do have staff that are addressing it. So again, we are aware, we're doing what we can, but as a public entity, there are Ninth Circuit Court rules that we must follow. All right, we will come back to the regular agenda. And the next item on the agenda is, let me find my notes, because I turned a page trying to make sure I answered questions that were asked, and I lost my page. Appointments. So we have several appointments tonight for several city commissions, committees, and boards. The first one is, we as a council have a compliance committee for subrecipient financial, programmatic, and monitoring reporting policies. The compliance committee shall be comprised of five members. One of the members is the city's Economic Community Development Department, one member from the city's Management Service Department, an annually rotating member from the Human Service Commission, and an annually rotating member of the city council and the city manager or his or her designee. Currently, we need to update that. We haven't had a need to meet, but it is coming up. So I need a council member willing to serve on the subrecipient financial, programmatic, and monitoring reporting policy. Do I have a volunteer or a nomination? Councilmember Starbuck.
With the nomination, I nominate somebody else, but I will volunteer to sit on this.
Thank you. So you will volunteer to be the first in the rotation that we will begin for a year.
Whatever you want to do with rotation, but I'll sit this year.
Thank you. All right, can I get a second for...
Second.
All right, seeing a motion and a second for councilmember Starbuck to serve this year, let's vote. Thank you so very much for your service. We appreciate that. All right. The next one is the Public Safety Commission. Currently, we have had a huge changeover on the Public Safety Commission. Those that have served for at least the last four years have termed out, and so we are reconstructing it. So if you would like to serve, there are four open positions. Tonight, we have one applicant for District Three, which happens to be councilmember Starbuck. So we will entertain a motion from him if he would like to appoint Angela Baca Cordova's.
Absolutely.
All right, and I will entertain a second for that. Second. All right, just finding the button. And if there's no questions, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Welcome aboard, Angela. That means that councilmember Vega has an opening, I have an opening, and councilmember Cordova has an opening. Until at least one of those positions is filled, it will not have a quorum and cannot meet. So if you are interested in overseeing public safety and you either live anywhere in the city, you can apply to be my appointee, or you live in District Two, which is councilmember Vega's, or District One, which is councilmember Cordova's, you can apply to serve. Applications are available both online and through the city clerks. Madam Clerk?
I just want to clarify too, councilmember Ball does have an opening as well. We did receive a resignation, so...
Okay, so all of the positions are open except for councilmember Starbuck's at the moment, and we are looking for appointees, including councilmember Ball. So please, if your concern is public safety and you would like to serve and assist us with making sure our community is safer, you are welcome to do so. Youth Commission. So on this, we have several terms. We have an adult term ending January 2025. We have three youth terms ending January 2025. We have one associate youth term ending 1/2024, and we have two associate youth terms ending 1/2025. Currently, we have two youth applicants. One is Wesley Mars, and the other is Callie Rosales. I will entertain a motion from a council member if you'd like to nominate them both and for which terms. I would look for that. Councilmember Ball.
All right, so maybe you can help me. Ball, happy to nominate them both and categorize them where you think they should fit.
I would say to the two youth terms of the three ending 1/2025.
Let's go with that.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Welcome aboard the Youth Commission. There again are an adult position and several youth associates. Usually, the youth associates are the slightly younger, and if you serve as a youth associate, you get experience to step into the youth terms. And we've had several youth return after going off to school and come back and serve as our adults. It is a great way to invest in the community and provide youth's perspective on what might need to be done to support them, so I encourage any of our young people interested in local government to serve. Councilmember Ball, your light is still on. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I just forgot.
That's fine, but I don't want to ignore there's something you'd like to provide. With the agenda was also a mention of the other city boards and commission and committees that have openings from District One or District Three. The Airport Commission has three at-large appointments and two others that end at different timeframes. So there's five positions, and three of them end on 1/2024, one ends in 1/2025, and one ends at 1/2026. Beautification Commission has a position that I appoint open that ends in 12/2024. So if you're interested in beautification, please contact me and submit an application. And I already mentioned all the Public Safety Commission. And I do realize that we also are having some openings on the Planning Commission recently, District Two and Four? I think. Four, definitely. Okay. It is posted on the city website. Please go to it. It is your chance to participate, and many of us have participated in those committees and commissions and gotten passionate enough to get involved and run for council. So it is a stepping stone for those of you curious about serving. It is a way to do that. Okay. Item five. All right, so...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, before you vacate this, the reason that you have the memo from me is because there are two applications connected to it...
Okay.
...that could be appointed to any of those highlighted openings.
Oh, those weren't attached in the online, which is where I go to, so I'm sorry. I didn't realize. So we have District Three, which is councilmember Starbuck.
With no vacancies.
With no vacancies, so I could potentially apply them too, and it's missing a page. So I would need to see the second page of the application.
Yes, ma'am. I think we emailed about that, and I don't know where that second page is. I have reached out to the applicant, so...
Okay, so I will call Eric Pranetta tomorrow and find out if he can submit his second page again, and so we can consider him for one of the opening positions that I have. And then we have District One, Planning, or any other board, Stephanie Bond, for councilmember Cordova to consider. So you can appoint at this time, or you can bring it back. She said Planning or any other board.
My Planning's already been filled.
Okay.
I have an opening, I think, on the one that you just mentioned, which was the, let's see, hold on one second.
Public Safety.
Public Safety. I would love to definitely, yeah.
So your nomination is Stephanie Bond for the Public Safety Committee.
Yes.
All right, councilmember Ball?
I was just going to second.
Okay. I wasn't sure, because I didn't see whose light goes on next, and if Starbuck was just leaving his light on. Awesome, okay. So we have, Stephanie Bond has been nominated to serve as Councilwoman Cordova's Public Safety appointee, and it's been accepted by councilmember Ball. Let's vote. And that passes five-o. There's your stack back. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I... You have another name?
Yeah, no, I have another. I have something to say.
Councilmember Cordova.
Okay, so I just want to notify too that Mr. Jerry Nyman, who has served throughout my entire time here on council on the Utilities Commission, he is having to step away, and so that vacancy will be coming up in the next week or so.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I want to publicly thank Mr. Nyman, because he has been amazing. He is such a great man to work with, and I'm so grateful for his service to our community under this position, as well as to District One and in representation of myself as well. So thank you, Mr. Nyman, and we hope to have him again in the future, but for now, he will be stepping away in the next week.
So you will have a Utility Commission position?
I will.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you for that update, and again, thank you, Mr. Nyman. I worked with him prior to councilmember Cordova making the appointment, so he has served quite a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else I'm missing on the appointments? Okay, thank you for catching that. Public Hearing, item five. Public Hearing on Proposed Solid Waste Rate Adjustments: Adoption of Resolution Number 658123, Establishing Rates and Charges for the Collection and Disposal of Solid Waste. And we will have Kristi Donnelly, our Management Services Director, for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council, public. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm Kristi Donnelly, Management Services Director. I'm going to read the recommendation. Just for the record, we are recommending that the city council open the public hearing for the proposed increases to solid waste collection rates and accept any written protests, additional written protests. And to close the public hearing, direct the city clerk to provide account of all written protests received and determine whether there is a majority protest, which is 50% plus one of all parcels. And three, if there is not a majority protest, adopt Resolution Number 658123, Establishing Rates and Charges for the Collection and Disposal of Solid Waste, including adjustments effective on July 1st each year from 2023 to 2027, or to provide alternate direction. So we last presented to council on February 21st, and then since then, we have issued over 10,000 mailers, closer to, between the customers and the owners, we've sent out approximately 20,000 mailers that have been addressed to each property owner as well as in group bills. The last notice was postmarked on April 21st, 2023, which is in order to meet the 45-day deadline that was required to notice this meeting. I'm going to invite Dave Davis, our, oh, there he is, our consultant from MSW up, to talk a little bit about the rate increase, and then we will go from there.
Evening, council. I have a slide presentation, I believe. Good evening, council. I'm David Davis with MSW Consultants. We're a solid waste consulting firm. We help cities set trash rates and negotiate trash contracts. We provided service to over 80 local governments, and I last spoke to you on February 21st of this year, and then before that in September. And tonight, I'm going to be presenting the recommended rate adjustments. And to do that, just going to talk a little bit about the background of what got us here, some of the factors that are driving the cost increases, the approach and the assumption and limitations that are inherent in this recommended rate adjustment. I'm going to talk about the projected operating results. So the cost of service involves a couple of things. One's a micro, which has to do with the individual rates that people pay. The other is kind of the macro, the amount of money that the enterprise fund generates. So we'll talk about those operating results. We'll talk about the rates that people will incur. We'll talk about the rates that people will incur, and then compare those rates to some other jurisdictions. So by way of background, the city has an enterprise fund, and it's like its own little company inside the city, and all the expenses that the city incurs to provide refuse collection service, it has to generate by the rates that it charges its ratepayers. And it's divided into two sections, there's a collection side of the operation and the landfill side. And those rates that are charged by the enterprise fund are subject to Prop 218, so, and that's why we're here tonight, that's why your residents received the notice. And the rates that are charged to your ratepayers are based on the size of container they have, and often the frequency of service. And there are some common levels of service that most people have, and we'll talk about those tonight. We'll also talk about the factors driving cost increases. The four main ones are SB 1383, which is the most significant change in solid waste regulations in the last 30 years in California. Also, the city's planning on replacing several of its vehicles over the next few years, and the landfill is gonna be closing in about 10 years, so there's funding in there to account for the next phase of the city's solid waste operations. And then finally, there's a stormwater infrastructure project at the landfill that is being required by the state regulators. So as far as SB 1383, the goal here is to keep organics out of the landfill, and the reason why we're doing that is to, when you put organics in the landfill and deprive it of oxygen, it creates methane and traps heat in the atmosphere. So the state is very intent on keeping organics out of the landfill. So to do that, they're mandating that all cities require their businesses and residents to recycle their organics, and because a lot more people are gonna be recycling their organics, there's a requirement of contamination monitoring that the city's required to undertake, which is very costly, because it's gonna have to actually go out and look in a certain number of people's containers and make sure that they're recycling properly. There's enforcement, so if people don't recycle, the state is requiring the city to conduct enforcement on businesses that don't recycle. The state is also requiring all cities to procure a certain amount of organic content products, so all of these things are creating upward pressure on solid waste rates all up and down the state, and in the city of Lompoc. Secondly, there are pretty significant capital expenditures that need to be incurred over the next few years. We've got vehicle replacement funding of about 1.25 million, and then also, when the landfill closes, the city's gonna have to make a decision whether it wants to spend the money to extend the life of the landfill, or if it wants to close the landfill and construct a transfer station and transfer its waste to a nearby landfill, probably the Santa Maria landfill. All those options are gonna cost more money, and what we've done is we've started to pay for some of that in the rate increase now, so that it won't be quite a shock when we approach the end of the landfill. And then also, as I'm sure you're aware, the State Water Quality Control Board is requiring the city to construct a pretty significant stormwater runoff system at the landfill. And this is a leftover slide, the cost at one time was thought to be about 5.2 million, and now it's estimated to be about 6 million. So that is also included in the projected capital expenditures. So when we started this process in September, we came before you with three scenarios, and they had to do with the constraints that we face in designing rates. And those constraints are, we want to maintain a certain cash balance in order to provide an adequate reserve for emergencies, and then we also have to have a certain amount of revenue that exceeds expenses, because the city does have debt funding, so it does have outstanding debt, and it's planning on issuing more debt to pay for these capital expenditures, like the stormwater program. So in order to have that debt, the people that loan the city money require the city to maintain a debt service coverage ratio, and what that means, it's gotta have a certain amount of revenue in excess of its operating expenses. And that number is 1.3, so basically it has to have about 130% of its operating expenses coming in as revenue. And then the other constraint is, you know, minimizing the impact on ratepayers over time. So we started with three scenarios. One, you may recall, it was, we had about a 16% increase, and we were just gonna keep cash below the required target. We had another scenario where we were gonna raise rates all at once, it was gonna be like a 50% rate increase. It would've got the cash where it needed to be, but it would've been like a 50% rate increase. And then a third scenario we had was about 15%, and that was where we were gonna recoup the cash over a period of time. And based on feedback from council, we were directed to come up with another scenario, so what we did is we took out some of the funding for the landfill or the next phase of operations and the transfer station, so we reduced the amount of capital expenditures that were included in the model. And that's what we have tonight, and that is basically scenario 4, and that's what was included in the notice that went out to your ratepayers. So what this chart shows is kind of a snapshot of the big picture of the solid waste enterprise fund. So the red and the green bars, and what this scenario is, is if you were to not adjust rates and leave rates where they are. The red and the green bar, so the red bars are your operating expenses, the green bars are your revenues, and then that green line is your cash balance. So when the red bar goes higher than the green bar, you're losing money and that cash balance goes down. So if the city doesn't raise rates at all, it's gonna deplete the entire fund balance by 2024 in the solid waste enterprise fund. And this is the same format of graph based on the proposed rates that were in the Prop 218 notice. And what this shows is that, well, the yellow line is the reserve, the target reserve balance, and that's 25% of your operating cost. And the idea is, it's 25% of your operating cost, if something catastrophic were to happen, you would have kind of three months to rebuild the system. And a lot of, lot of public agencies use that 25% for collection operations. So under the scenario that we're presenting tonight, the cash is gonna go below its target balance for a few years, but it's gonna come back out on the other end. And then you may notice that at the far end of the graph, towards the right, the green bars are a fair amount higher than the red bars, which means your revenue is gonna be exceeding your expenses. But the reason that has to be is because you have to have that debt service coverage ratio in order to satisfy the requirements of your bondholders, because you are gonna have to borrow money. If you didn't borrow money, if you just paid for this all out of pocket, it'd just be this really significant rate increase. So we have all these constraints that we try and balance, and I think this is the least worst of all the scenarios, if I can characterize it that way. So now I just want to show the most common, these aren't all the rates, all the rates are, were posted on the city's website, and the most common rates were included in the Prop 218 notice that went out. So down the side is some typical service levels, a 65-gallon container, 95, and then extra containers, and then the columns across the top show the years in which the rates will be in effect. So right now, in fiscal '23, the rate for 65-gallon container is $31.99, and that's proposed to be increased by about 15.6% to $36.97. So you may notice in the first year, not all the increases for all the containers are the same, and the reason for that is because we did a cost of service study, and we looked at the time and the motion, what it costs to provide each level of service. So we looked at, you know, how many gallons were disposed, and how much time it took to service that container, and we realigned the rates in the first year. So now, once the rates are realigned in the first year, then the rate adjustments are the same thereafter. So in the first year, on the 65-gallon, you get a 15% increase, and then it's 15.0 out from there. And these are the multifamily and commercial rates. So for example, a multifamily customer or a commercial customer with a 450-gallon container currently is paying $115, and because we realigned the rates, that rate is gonna go down slightly in the first year, and then thereafter, it's going to be going up. And then at the landfill, there's a minimum charge, the current minimum charge is $25, that's gonna increase about a dollar a year for the next four years. And then the per ton, right now, the per ton rate that you charge to yourselves and to other people that use the landfill, the rate is gonna go to $100 a ton, and then increase about $5 a ton thereafter. And then the charge for a car right now is $10, that's proposed to go to $15, and then increase a dollar, $2 thereafter, really a dollar thereafter per year. And then what this does is this compares the rates that are currently in Lompoc with the ones that are proposed. So for example, I'll look at my notes real quick here. So that light blue bar at the very far left, that's the $31.99 that you're currently paying for a 60-gallon, and then that's gonna go up to the other light blue bar, which is 36 gallons. But even after this increase, even though it is pretty significant, it's still gonna be competitive in relation to rates for similar service at other cities in Santa Barbara County. And the 90-gallon rate, the rate, the light blue rate on the left represents the $41.40 that ratepayers are paying now, and the bar right next to it, that's a little bit higher, that represents the $46.96 that is gonna be increased. And then these darker bars are the rates for similar service in other cities in Santa Barbara County. And then finally, here's the last collection rate before we get into landfill rates, and this shows, it's a little bit different because we're comparing to a two-yard rate. Other cities have, so you have a 450-gallon container, there's 202 gallons in a cubic yard, so a two-cubic yard container is about 400 gallons. So we're comparing your 450-gallon rate to a rate for a two-yard bin, which is about 404 gallons. But in any event, the rate for a 450-gallon in Lompoc is significantly less than rates for a similar-sized container in other Santa Barbara cities. Two more slides. Landfill Minimum Rate, this is the one that's gonna go from 21 to 25. It's still less than other landfills and transfer stations in Santa Barbara County. And then the tipping fee for weighed tons, these are, you're kind of in the middle of the pack, your Tahiguis, I think, might be a little bit higher by now, but as far as the market for weighed tons in Santa Barbara County, you're still kind of in the middle of the pack. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Cordova.
Can you go back to the slide, the one before that, for the landfill minimum rates?
Yes.
So the city of Lompoc noted is the lowest compared to some of the other areas. Is there a way that we would be able to charge a higher rate for non-residential? Because you mentioned that we have people that don't live here that dump in our landfill. So if we're paying as a community our fair share for our uses, someone that's coming in from out of town is not part of the community, they should be paying at a higher rate. Is that something that can be considered? Because looking at that, I, and I've heard it quite often, some people are motivated to come and dump their trash here, because it's so much lower.
I believe so, I'd like to check with the city attorney, just to make sure, but I do think that that does happen in water rates, when I think the idea is, is that the people that live in the city are the ones that take the risk for the bonds, so because they take more risk, they can have a little bit better rate than people coming from the outside. So I believe the answer is yes, but I'd like to check with the city attorney.
Councilmember Cordova, I also think it's possible, I would want to check, but one thing is that tipping fees and landfill fees are not subject to Prop 218, so if we did want to have a change in our rate structure for the landfill, we would not need to go through this noticing process anymore, we could do it at any time.
Beautiful. I think it's something that we should consider.
Councilmember Ball.
I just, I totally agree with that concept, and I wanted to follow up on that. I just, I think the process now, we don't ask somebody where they're from necessarily, but maybe we look at their driver's license, how would we determine, would we just, they'd need to show their license and say where they're from?
Well, I think you do, I'd have to look at Keith, because I think the state wants all landfills to keep track of where the waste originates that's coming into the landfill, so I'm pretty sure that does occur.
Good evening, Council. Keith Quinlan, you're a solid waste superintendent. Yes, that, we can check IDs when customers enter the landfill. In fact, the state does require us to determine where the waste comes from. I'll give you a brief example, if you were a landfill in LA, you may be receiving waste from 50 to 100 different jurisdictions. Here, we pretty much receive two, which is the county and the city. We don't take waste from outside of our area, we don't take it from Bulton, we don't take it from Santa Maria, but we do take it in our general area right outside the city, so we can utilize checking IDs at the landfill.
So logistically, it wouldn't be a big issue to potentially put something into place and charge different rates and know where they're coming from, then?
That's correct, yes, we could look into that.
Awesome, thank you. I may have just one more quick question for you. Again, I appreciate the thoughtfulness and coming back with another option, you know, just considering that we, if you can go to that graph where we do go below the yellow line for three or four years. So I think that's great, and we definitely come out on the back end a little bit shinier, but is there, are we increasing any sort of risk, or is the city finance department comfortable with riding below that yellow line for a few years?
Well, it's a trade-off, right? So we're trying to minimize the impact on the ratepayers and, you know, mitigate the risk. So ideally, you'd like to have that green line above the yellow line, the yellow line represents three months of cash in the bank, the dark red line below represents one month. So where you're going is you're gonna have a little bit less than two months' worth of cash in the bank for a few years, and then it's gonna start to recover.
Awesome, and we've done, I think, down to two months for some other departments for things, so I think that's pretty reasonable. Thank you, unless you wanted to say something about that?
We've determined that that would be reasonable, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, just a couple of points here I'd like to make, is it used to be more expensive for a non-resident. Mission Hills Village, they paid a couple of dollars extra, don't know what happened to it, but I tell you what happened last time we raised rates, the illegal dumping around town went through the roof, and you can expect that to happen again, I'd just say. One thing that is gonna happen, the council is gonna be the dirty people in this. The council raised our rates, they did this, oh, it's their fault, we're paying this extra money for solid waste. I don't think that people outside of this chamber right now realize how much money the state has mandated us. If we didn't have all these state mandates, we would've had a couple of dollars rate increase, and we'd have been on top and been good, maintaining our landfill closure fee. But I'd like to reiterate here that you had 5.1 million for stormwater collection. I'm a betting man, I'll bet it gets close to 7 million. That's just me. I'm gonna tell you the methane gas fiasco, I think we're spending more money on propane to keep a pilot light lit than we are saving the world with that, and that was only a million and a half that the state funded for us. We ate that. Let's look at the Feed the People Out of the Trash Container Program, we ate that, I don't know what we've spent. So this isn't the council, and this is nothing anybody could've done anything about, other than voting somebody out in Sacramento that was all pro-garbage, forget you people. I just wanted to bring that up, that's why we're gonna have this big rate increase.
Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will open the floor for public comment. You have three minutes. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Did we have any written, oh, I'll ask you about written communications when we're done, because this is a special hearing, so. Floor is now open, if you'd like to come to the podium, you have three minutes.
Carl Jones, how you doing? One of the things that the council might want to look at, illegal businesses. We got them all through this city. I know people that bring trash in from Goleta, because they have legal recycle businesses, it's been reported. So we got trash from Goleta being dumped in our landfill. So we got trash from Goleta being dumped in our landfill. We got trash from out of the outerline areas of all these illegal businesses that are going on in this city. They might be licensed in the county of Santa Barbara, they're not licensed in our city. But they definitely are dumping trash in our city dump. Thank God, we got a code enforcement now to help them go a little bit after this kind of stuff. But this is the type of stuff that's paying in, that's causing our citizens to have to pay higher rates as well. Because the one person I know of has been dumping here for well over thirty years. If this guy hadn't hauled in Goleta, Santa Barbara, Bulton, every other city in the world, and this happens in multiple areas throughout Lompoc, our landfill may not be as full as it is now, if we'd gone after him at an earlier time and said, hey, you want to be here? He licensed, he can do it the right way. You pay as much as the next guy. This, this is stuff that they got to look at, the homeless. Every time we go down, clean up that riverbed, how many, and I know your hands are tied, I know your hands are tied, but we got to find ways to go after them and say, this ain't right. Because we got tons upon tons upon tons of trash going that should not be going, but the only people who are paying for it are the citizens. But I'm just, one of the things I know right off the top of my head that's happening is all the illegal businesses that are going on in this city, they're hauling in stuff from these ranches, other cities, because they are licensed to do it. I understand these people need to make a living, but it's something that needs to be taken care of because the majority of people are paying for few people doing the illegal. Thank you.
So, council and mayor, I also want to presignify, capitalize on the statement that was brought up about the homeless trash. I think you remember back when we were doing some cleanup work around the riverbed, my wife and I were participating in that. And, and one of, one of two events that we went to, there was over two large trailerfuls of trash that we picked up in half-day. And this goes to our landfill. That was one of the things that was brought up to council about reimbursement or a discounting dump fee because we were doing community cleanup. And so I would encourage the council to consider this. I know that you are hamstrung by certain laws, but I, I really believe that there is an, a way that can be employed to keep all of this out of our landfills and keep it from being dragged into our riverbed and into areas from our local community. So I would encourage you to seek other ways to abate the migration of trash into these areas. And thereby also avoid these additional trashes being, having to consolidate it into one large pickup and head into our dump. So these are all part of the problem. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for all that you guys do. I actually came tonight prepared to file a written protest against this, but now that I, what I was protesting, actually, was not what has been discussed tonight. I think I totally understand the concept of the price and the fees and why they have to go up, that makes total sense. The same notification that was mailed forty-five days ago that I got includes a line to wit, "The city will continue its transition to a rate structure in which multifamily complexes are billed to the property owner based on the number and size of containers and the frequency of service, similar to how commercial customers are now billed." Is that part of this discussion, or is that a done deal? Because if that's part of the discussion, then I would like to file the protest. I'm not protesting the raise in fees, those make total sense. I'm protesting the concept of the property owners being responsible for the residents living in a multifamily dwelling. Should I file this?
I, I would go ahead and file it because we can't give you an answer until we're done with public comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. I came as a elder citizen that is on a fixed income and really has trouble with all these increases, you know, thirty percent rate increase for the electric. The, the figures the gentleman gave us before are a little different from what we had gotten in our mailing. In our mailing, it had said that currently the, the rate is thirty-one ninety-nine, it's going up in July of this month of, of this year, another fifteen percent to thirty-six, which is fifteen percent, and then to thirty percent more in July of twenty-four. But you had little different figures there, but this is what was mailed to us. However, again, I live by myself, I put my trash out at the most once a month. Why do I have to pay the same as the family next to me that has six people or the family down the road that has ten people with the same-sized trash container? There should be a way that we can apply to maybe have a sticker on the trash cans, let's say a different color, that maybe get put out the first of the month or the last of the month, only, and only get picked up then, and our rates would be reduced by a fourth or a half at least, depending how often we put our trash out, because it seems very inequitable at this time. Something to think about.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one call in and no one else rise, we will close public comment on this. Before we move forward on discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please give us a report on how many protests you received, the number, and if it met the majority of vote parcels for the protest?
So as of end of business today, we received a hundred-and-twelve protests. Today, during the meeting, we received six more. That is not qualify.
Thank you for that report. All right. Council, discussion or motion? Councilmember Starbuck.
As much as I dislike being that guy, I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendations.
And I will give you the second, Kevin. I was that guy last time, so I will give you your second. Again, if we didn't have to do this because we had unfunded mandates, we, we would be at a much lower rate. So, motion, a second, any other questions or concerns? Councilmember Cordova.
Are we going to consider potentially a difference for people that are out of town?
Do you need a motion for that, Mr. Malave?
I don't need a motion for that, but that would be a council request to bring it back to a future agenda item. Because we can't do it tonight.
So why don't we vote on this, and then you make your council request right after we vote for it? Oh, let me look at that real quick. I believe you, you previously requested for staff to return. I think you're right. And the future agenda list is the prior council meeting, it's not on this. Where is it? Can I see it? Wait, turn the page. If we made it, it didn't make the list.
I do know that it is in the minutes, so I'll make, I'll make sure it's on the future agenda list.
Okay. Yeah, because I know we did talk about it the last time we talked about the rates. So if you discover it's not there, let us know, and we'll make the request at the next meeting. Does that work? Or would you like us to make the request?
Just make the request tonight, and then we'll put it on there if it's not there.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's vote on this first, and then we'll make the request to confirm it to make sure that we don't have to backtrack. All right, let's vote. And that passes four-one. And then Councilmember Cordova had a request to bring back a report as to how we could charge those that live outside a different rate. I will give her a second.
For the landfill.
For the landfill. And I will give her a second, and we just need a third.
A third.
Councilball, Ball, or Starbuck, third. So even though we've already discussed it, and it's likely ready, we have confirmed it so that there is no questioning and we don't have to worry about it. Great, okay. All right, item number six. Review the police, Lompoc Police Department's twenty-twenty-two Annual Military Equipment Report, Community Engagement Session Conduction, Annual Renewal of the Ordinance Adopting the Lompoc Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy and Inventory Pursuant to AB-481. And that will be our Police Chief Captain Martin, Police Chief Kevin Martin, who is not, like, I looked up for a second, and I'm so excited to see you just with a cane.
I'm, I'm getting there.
You're getting there, so.
It's a slow process, but I'm getting there.
So, slow but steady. Awesome. Yeah, that's what distracted me when I almost called you captain again, was I saw that there was a cane instead of full-on crutches.
One day at a time, council, mayor. So just as a reminder of what we're here to talk about tonight was, excuse me. In September, on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, Governor Gavin Newsom signed Assembly Bill Forty-One into law. And Forty, 481 requires that all law enforcement agencies disclose any military equipment that they currently possess and use in enforcing laws and taking actions in the community. On May seventeenth of twenty-twenty-two, the city council adopted ordinance number sixteen-ninety-four, parenthetical twenty-two, approving the military equipment list that we put together and presented to council at that time. In regards to why I'm here tonight, is we are required by 481 to update the council on any changes and what we've used, and if we have removed anything from, from that list that you've already viewed in twenty-twenty-two. And again, this is about twenty-twenty-two, so nothing has changed. Everything remains the same. There has been some use of some of the, what we call flashbangs, the light distraction devices that we use. But what happens with those is they have a shelf life, and as they start to degrade and can no longer be used in, in an operation, we put those into a training environment. And then as the SWAT team, SWAT team practices every month, they'll deploy those as part of their practice and we replace those. So as far as any of the equipment, our ARV, our armored rescue vehicle, we still have. It, it goes out monthly with the SWAT team for training purposes. Our mobile command post, which is considered a military tool, it, it has been out of service for the last four months. It still remains out of service. We're getting close. But everything that you saw in that list, nothing's changed. So we're just reporting that to you to, for transparency purposes, to you, the council, and the public, to let you know where we're at today.
Any questions for Chief? Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I just, a quick question, and again, I appreciate, we're kind of going through the motion on this, we've already approved this in the past. I did have somebody reach out to me, and they just kind of had a blanket statement, like, I don't think they should have military equipment, and why are they so, why do they need this, and it's so aggressive? And I said, well, that's an interesting point. But as I was reading through this, I noticed that some of the items listed are actually meant to be less than lethal, so maybe you can elaborate on why do we need these military pieces of equipment? And do we just willy-nilly decide to show up and use them for fun? Or is there a process where we got to use it as a last resort?
Yeah, there, there is always a purpose to what we do if we deploy these tools. And to, to make sure that the public understands there's many, many hours put into anything that is going to be deployed potentially by the officers who deploy that. So, for example, I shared that our SWAT team practices every month, and that's when they are using these tools, practicing and deploying those as necessary, so that when we are forced into a situation where we have to use them in the public, they have that time and experience to know when and when not to. Many of the tools actually, what I, what I try to remind people is, is that this, these are lifesaving tools, they're not life-taking tools. And, and when we deploy these, just about every case, it results in a non-lethal use of force. We, we end the event usually by tear gas or something like that, so that we don't have to actually potentially take a life. And in most cases, that's what we're talking about here. And so as we use these tools, whether it's a forty-millimeter launcher for a rubber bullet or a foam bullet, those are less lethal tools that we deploy so that we don't have to risk taking somebody's life if we don't have to.
Sorry, I really think that's an important distinction here. It's not necessarily the local police trying to become the military, it's just utilizing these tools as needed. And I think, again, that clarity, that sometimes it's meant to actually try to save someone's life and not just take it, I think that's an important distinction, so thank you for clarifying that.
And, and to also be clear, as part of 481, a lot of the tools that we have, the legislature decided what was going to be considered military and not military in nature. So many of these tools we've used for many, many, many years. And just because of the change in 481, we now have to disclose and identify those in that category of a military tool. For example, we do have two drones, we have four pilots. We use those for search and rescue. We use those for SWAT operations, much like a helicopter, we can't afford one, so we use that so we could see from an aerial view. We've already discussed the ARV. That's a lifesaving device that has the ability to take certain caliber rounds and to protect people inside of it, so that we can roll in there, pull somebody in and get them out of a bad place, so that we can save their lives. So there's, this is, these are just changes in the legislature and the laws and what the, the governor has asked, and, and we are just fulfilling that requirement that we have to share with the council and the public.
Well, and I would say for that, that concern is that is this tool. It's a transparency tool, because as part of the report, for those of you who may not have read it, it also requires you to report, did you receive any complaints if it was used? And how did you respond to that? And is there additional costs associated with it? Is there additional requests? So it is a very transparent document regarding utilizing these tools on all levels that didn't exist until twenty-twenty-one, if I remember correctly. So this will be the third time that we're very transparent with the community about what tools you have, how they're utilized, how much they cost us both to maintain and train or replace, and if there's been any issues either from a citizen's concern or from yours. So, so I think it is a positive tool for those concerned about these existing within our, our forces, tools.
Yes.
Okay. So as part of the process required by AB-481, there is a community engagement session required. That is this public comment period. So now is your opportunity, if you have any concerns about anything on this list or anything reported in it, now is your time to contribute to that community engagement session through public comment. If you would like to speak on the item, you have three minutes and may come to the podium. You may call in at eight-zero-five-eight-seven-five-eight-two-zero-one. And Madam Clerk, do we have any written on item six?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Okay. So again, the podium is open, you have three minutes. While we wait to see if anyone calls in, how about I go ahead and do an announcement, so that's one less thing I talk about much later. Really exciting, the Parks and Rec, along with the Kiwanis Club, is hosting its eighteenth annual golf tournament. You're welcome to come out on July fourteenth at the Mission Club. Tournament includes lunch, dinner, hors d'oeuvres, awards, raffles, mulligans, and golf. Check-in time is eleven AM with a shotgun start at twelve-thirty PM. Fees are sixty-five dollars for Mission Club members, hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per person, hundred-and-fifty-dollar tea sponsors. There is more information on the city website and at apm activem communities dot com forward slash Lompoc. There is more information on the city website and at apm activem communities dot com forward slash Lompoc Recreation. Or you may contact Recreation Supervisor Chad Dawson at 805-875-8092. Seeing no one rise, seeing no one call in on this item and no written, we will close public comment, thereby closing our community engagement session and bring it back to council for, um, a motion to accept the report, to review and accept. Councilmember Cordova.
I make a motion to, um, accept the report now that we have had the opportunity to discuss and review.
Thank you, Councilmember Ball.
Second.
All right, so we've had a motion and a second.
Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that included in that motion is, uh, staff recommendation number three involving making certain findings and renewing the ordinance from last year.
Including all of staff recommendation, how does that?
That'd be perfect.
Because it's part of the recommendation, all right. So move. And second.
So seconded.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with clarity from our, um, city attorney on this item. Seeing no other questions, let's vote. And that passes for one in abstention. Four yes, one in abstention. All right. We will take a 10-minute break before we dive into budget. Which is why Councilmember Vega is likely stepped away, but we voted, you could have stayed out. So we're gonna take a 10-minute break, we'll be back and discuss budget after 10 minutes. Thank you everyone for allowing, um, us to have a 10-minute break. We will move on to our unfinished business, our final, I, well, not our final item because we have item two to come back to, um, after this. But, um, our next item on the agenda then is review and discussion of fiscal year 2023 to 2025 biennial budget. And we have staff presentations to go with this tonight. Who is kicking it off?
I'll do a real quick kickoff here. Um, I want to welcome everybody to our third, uh, budget workshop. Our first one was goals. Our next one was operating expenditures, and tonight we're gonna be looking at capital improvements. I real, really quick wanted to thank Kristi Donnelly and the Management Services Team for doing, transferring this to a digital budget book. It's a ton of work. I know you did a lot of work on this and I've been working with you. But I wanted to thank you guys and your team for everything you've done and really opens up transparency, you can really look at what we're doing. So, I'll turn it over to Kristi.
Thank you. Well, hello again. So we have prepared two draft documents that I'm going to introduce to you tonight. You have been sent both of those and they've been made on, they're on the website. We have a summary of one of them, it, this, the first summary pages, we had some copies out in the lobby. But that, those are all available on the website, I'm gonna go over how to get there and all of that. We're just, we're super excited to be able to share this because it really does open up, like Dean said, a level of transparency and, um, of an ability to kind of, to see ju- just the departments and the funds and where they stand and what we're looking to, to, um, to do in the next budget, budget cycle. It is a culmination of an amazing team effort and I just really want to take a minute to thank Stephen Vaie. And even though she is no longer with the city, Aaron Keller, she helped at the beginning of this. Marcy Webb, Susan Blocker, Matt Adams, Bob Cross, and everyone else on my team, um, that has kept everything else running while Kristi's been kind of the crazy person in the background who was stressed out and not available. So, um, I'm going to do the rest of this presentation from the chair because I need to be able to move around on the, on the computer, so. And it's a little odd because I can only see three of you, but I'm, I'm looking at you in spirit. So you may notice our city website here, I wanted to actually go to the, oh, that happened. Thank you. So the first document that I want to just quickly highlight, we're not gonna go into depth of this quite yet. We're, um, like Dean said, we're gonna focus on CIPs or the Capital Improvement Program tonight. But we, but I want to introduce you to the budget book. This is on the.
With the disco light effect, but okay. Keep going, I'm sorry, I just.
I did, I did, um, request the, the dance environment.
Okay, awesome, keep us upbeat, all right.
So, I am at the city website, all I did was goo- was Google search, City of Lompoc Finance, and it took me to this web, this page. And so you can then get to the draft proposed 2325 City of Lompoc Digital Budget Book. My, my disclaimer right now is what is up here is a draft. We, we do not have every piece of it completed. Over the next week to two weeks, we're going to be completing the analysis portion and some of the summary things. So you aren't gonna see, um, some of the verbiage that will be on the final document. But we didn't want the, the time that it is gonna take to really put those, the verbiage together to delay our ability to look at the numbers and discuss them. So if I click on this link, it's gonna take us to an external site, which is, um, our, um, digital budget book through ClearGov. And here you're gonna see, um, the beginning of the budget book. There are multiple tabs along the top here. And each of these have dropdown, um, sections. And so, for example, we can go to the history of the city and it's gonna give us just basic information about the city. And this is all stuff that you would have found in the budget book before, but now it's on, in digital format. We have our city council. And, and I just encourage everyone to kind of go through and browse around. The pieces that are going to give you the most information about the budget and the numbers are through our department tabs and through our fund summary tabs. The department tabs, um, have each of our departments. And then if you notice, like in public utilities, you click on the down, the down arrow and all of our public utilities are listed. And if you click on one of these, um, I'm just gonna go, let's go to, I'm gonna pick on, I'm gonna pick on police. It takes us to their department page where it shows the mission and has information about the department and what they, what they provide and the services that they provide for the city, as well as their accomplishments in the last, the last budget cycle and the objectives for this upcoming budget cycle and how those relate to the city council goals. Each department has, um, has this information. Right now, all except for my department because I haven't written mine yet, so I'm calling myself out. I, I did the whole other, the rest of the book though, so I think that I have an excuse. Though, that will be in there by the time that we have the final book. Um, the expenditure summary is here, this is, um, over the course of, of the year by department. And then we get to look at expenditures by expense type. So you can see, um, that as we have, have often said that our staffing costs are the biggest cost that we have within the general fund and the police is part of the general fund. And that, that is really what our, our tax revenue supports. And then if you get, you get down to the bottom, this is when the, my inner nerd comes out and you can check, click on the spreadsheet and you can get all the numbers. This is all broken down by the different types of, of expense objects. We go to the fund summaries, we do the same thing, I'm gonna go to the general fund and we're gonna get, look at this a little bit more closely after we go through the CIP presentations. But here, you can see under the fund summaries, you're going to have, uh, year, year-over-year, you're gonna look at actual revenues, budgeted revenues, actual expenditures and budgeted expenditures. And you can highlight each of these to see, to, to look at what it is that is most important to what you are investigating or looking at. The general fund comprehensive summary is where we look at all of our revenues in the general fund and then all of our expenditures in the general fund. And it's broken down by division. Revenues by source, so we talk about how, what portion of our general fund revenues come from taxes versus internal service charges versus transfers from other funds and all of these. and all of these other things, and we can look at each of those. And then, again, a spreadsheet breakdown of all the different taxes that we bring in, and that our citizens are paying. And, and there's a lot of breakdown, we got a lot of detail here. There is options for detail in certain areas, but as it is, our, when you take this and print it, it turns out to be almost 500 pages. So we, we try to make it so that the information that you get in the department section is different than the information that you get in the fund summaries. Even though there's some overlap, it, it's grouped a little bit differently. And again, expenditures by function, which is kind of like the, the visions within the department. And another spreadsheet breakdown, which, you know, I could spend hours going over all this, but I know that you guys don't want that. So I've introduced you to the budget book. We'll look at that more if you have questions after we do the CIP. I am going to go back here, and we're going to look at the CIP book. Similar, it is a little bit, there's less tabs. We're going to look at our capital improvements, and these are going to be divided either into the one-year plan, so that's what's coming up in the next fiscal year, in fiscal year 2324. And our multi-year plan is the six-year plan. We do have within the one-year plan the ability to see a listing of the second year of the budget cycle, but this is highlighting the first year of the budget cycle. So these are all of the capital improvement that have been requested and approved by, or pending approval, I should say, requested by department, and then the different revenue sources that are paying for those. What's pretty cool about this is that you can go, like, here, we see police service requests. And so these are all of the requests that we've been able to fund in our capital improvement plan for police. And then if you click on one of these, the body cameras, it's going to take you to a more detailed description of what that project is, the justification for it, our fiscal year 24 budget, and then all, all six years, what the budget would be. And then we can look at a spreadsheet breakdown. And here is where you're going to see, and it's a little bit small, so I want to point out, this is right, this is where you're going to see how it's being funded. It's right, it shows you right here that it's being funded by the general fund. Whereas if I were to go up into, let's go back, let's see, not that one. If I go to, say, I'm going to go down to one of our utility, to water, and I look at the chemical building window replacement, which you're going to hear about here in a minute, you're going to see the same type of thing, where you're going to see all of the, the project justification and the cost. The cost is broken down into construction. We have some general categories there. And then you'll see here, instead of it saying general, general fund, it's showing you that the customer revenues are paying for, for this. And so it's being taken out of the, the revenues that we are receiving from billing for, for the service. And so with that, what I'm going to do is turn it over to our utility department, and we're going, they're going to do some presentations on what their capital improvement programs or projects that they are proposing for this year are. So I'll go ahead and-
And, and while we make that transition, Kristi, can you remind the public that if they choose to hit print on the actual budget, how many pages is it?
It's about 500, well, on the capital improvement program one, it's 400-something, and then on the-
And so I just want to make sure the public's very aware that if you hit that print button, it might be quite a few sheets that you weren't prepared for. So while we don't discourage you from printing, we just don't want you to be surprised if it takes an entire ream or two of paper.
It's really, it's really designed to be looked at online.
Online, exactly. But I know there are individuals that still like to look at paper versions, but-
Absolutely. And one of the things, and I'm just going to show you here on the budget book, if I click on print, it's not going to automatically print everything.
Okay.
You actually are going to get an option to print different pieces of it.
Okay, so you could print particular sections if you wanted to.
Exactly.
Okay, I think that's just important to share with the public and with us as council, so we don't, you know, print 400 and some odd pages by accident.
Yep.
Deplete our-
And especially because this is a draft, these, we are, you know, receiving feedback from, from council and from the public at this point on these numbers. These are proposed, but likely some of them are going to change a little bit depending upon the feedback and what we are finalizing. And so I just, if you're going to print one, wait for the final.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, Mr. Berry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be up here tonight. Staff will be up before, before you here momentarily, and will be discussing at a high level the summarized CIP that we're proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. To that end, I have Dave Campo representing the electric utility, Dr. Sean representing wastewater, Keith Quinlan for solid waste, Rich Grasek for broadband, and rounding that out will be Sean Ryan with a presentation on water CIP. So to that end, I'll turn it over to Mr. Campo.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. As CJ mentioned, I'm Dave Campo. I'm the estimator for the electric division. The following presentation is going to be the capital improvements that the electric division would like to complete in the next two years. So this is a list of the 11 proposed projects. Go into a little more detail in the following slides. So priority one for the electric division is supporting new residential and commercial development. We do this with installing new electrical infrastructure and/or upgrading existing in order to support the customer needs. This project's 100% developer-funded, and we estimate $300,000 each fiscal year for the next two years. Number two is, it's kind of an ongoing project for us. It's the citywide replacement of damaged transformers and switches. Electric division has approximately 1,300 pad mount transformers, overhead transformers, and switches in the field, of which we replace approximately nine each year, and that's due to issues due to leakage, corrosion, rusting. They're compromised beyond what we're able to repair, either in the field or back at the shop. We are requesting additional funding compared to previous years. That's due to increased costs we've seen caused by supply chain issues and surging demand. The additional funding of 175, up to $175,000 is requested for each fiscal year. So this one is, or number three, it's our 4 to 12 KV conversion of overhead and underground power lines. The voltage conversion for us is a process of rebuilding our power lines and at the same time upgrading them from 4,000 volt to 12,000 volt. That conversion allows for a decrease in our line losses that we see on our system, gives us increased circuit capacity, and it also allows for us to just reduce the inventory requirements that normally we would keep on hand for 4 KV equipment. We're finally down to two project areas remaining in the northeast portion of the city with an estimated cost of $400,000 each fiscal year. Next project, number four, this would be converting the North F Street overhead power lines to underground. This would be done by installing electrical vaults, conduits, and 600-amp cable system along North F Street from East Laurel Avenue to East College Avenue, East Brunav Alley. Doing so would give us three new circuit ties. It would definitely increase our reliability and our switching capability between the 12 KV circuits, the 101, the 202, and the 301. And because this section of line is on poles that are jointly owned with PG&E, if we were to be able to underground our city lines in this section, it would allow us, if we could do that before PG&E initiates joint pole replacements, we'd be able to relinquish those poles to them and save approximately $160,000 in the process. This project is estimated at about $275,000, and we'd like to do this in the next fiscal This is number five. This is a underground cable replacement project in the area of 7th to East to Riverside Drive, and from Pine Avenue south to Laurel Avenue. We'd like to replace all of our 15 KV high-voltage cable and components that service the 400 block of North H Street, it's a commercial area, and along with the residential homes that are between North 7th Street to Riverside Drive and East Pine Avenue to East Laurel Avenue. This cables was installed back in the early 80s, and it's rapidly approaching its end of service life. We have an estimated cost of $170,000, and we'd like to get that done in the following So I think we're a little out of order here. So yes, number six priority would be the decommissioning of our 4 KV substation transformers. Two currently remain in our, our system. They're at the receiving station and one at the E Street yard. As we complete our conversion process, it will render these transformers obsolete. We estimate $60,000 for the removal, disposal, and possible salvage by a third party. And the next one, we have 12 KV vacuum circuit breakers that are at the receiving station. There's nine of those that are currently in service. Those are what switch and protect our, our power line circuits that go out into the city. Six have been in service approximately 40 years, three for 30. And due to the limited availability of parts due to their age, we recommend replacement. Gives us greater system reliability and increased safety. Estimated cost of $150,000 in fiscal year 2425. So number eight for the department would be an AMI metering pilot project. AMI stands for advanced metering infrastructure. Our existing system, metering system is AMR, which is automated meter reading. Replacing this with an AMI system would allow for two-way communication with the meters out in the field, as opposed to the one-way communication we currently have with the AMR. Would also allow for remote disconnect capability. It would reduce the staff time for people to go out and remote, or to turn them on and off in the field for non-payment or just new service. It does provide us with a pathway to a smart grid, and it also allows for a potential time of use rate if the city was to adopt that type of rate schedule. Ongoing replacement to replace the AMR system with the AMI is estimated at $375,000 each I think so, yeah, I adjusted the. So number nine is the V Street Storage Yard on North V Street. We are rapidly running out of room at that yard. We'd like to remove a concrete pad from an old substation site, replace it with asphalt, give a little bit more storage area. The top photo, you can see it's behind our exist, some of our switches, it's kind of unused space. We'd also like to install a chain-link fence on the west side, and that'd be between our storage yard and the housing development. We need to upgrade the alarm system to minimize and deter theft. We'd also like to install elevated concrete rails for utility pole storage. Our current method of storage is utilizing wood poles that we turn into a maintenance issue for us and a safety issue as they start to wear out and rot out. This project would be fundable through the sale of our recyclables as we remove underground cable and all the copper. It has an estimated cost of $200,000 for this fiscal year. Number 10, this is for the city hall parking lot lighting and standards. We'd like to replace all 21 of the existing light standards with an extruded decorative aluminum that's used down in the Old Town area currently. It'd standardize our fixtures for one, in addition to converting them to a correct LED fixture. The $138,000 estimated cost does include replacement of the existing foundations, and that's due to the foundation bolts that are currently in service are severely corroded and they're just, it's a, they wouldn't work for a new light. And lastly, number 11, this is for replacement of all the existing galvanized streetlight standards along H and Ocean. This would be with a decorative ornamental standard with LED lighting. These standards would feature a separate luminaire for sidewalk illumination. Much of the existing street lighting equipment in the field now is approaching the end of its service life, and replacement with a ornamental decorative standard would both add to beautification and along with increasing public safety. This project is estimated at 2.1 million. And that concludes our capital improvement project presentation. Are there any questions?
So on, but this one in particular, is that multi-phases, or is that a, you know, a single year? What, what are you looking, because that's a long distance between Ocean and H to try and get-
Yeah, it was a total of 207 lights-
Okay.
For, for that whole stretch. So it could be in a phased approach, you know, these are up for your guys' consideration or input.
And how old are the current lights that are along Ocean and H?
There's, we don't even keep records on those dates, so, I mean, obviously, I think the center, Old Town is obviously going to be much, you know, as you get further north, are going to be newer.
Slightly newer, but they're, I heard 30 to 40 years old at this point, so way past their life.
Yeah, I, I think we have stories of some guys who've been in the, that were in the shop for 35 years when they first got here. They didn't have the galvanized standards, and they were painting them routinely with silver paint. So we've since replaced with galvanized standards, but it's the foundation bolts that are, are showing their age.
And then the, the one that always comes to us, and I know we're not funding it this year, but the potential to buy new Christmas decorations. I'm guessing the new Christmas decorations that exist don't function well with our poles and how to attach, because most cities have moved on from the types of poles we have, I'm guessing?
Yes.
So it might give us the opportunity to invest in new Christmas ornaments on a future CIP, potentially?
It may.
Okay. And then the last part is, this is CIP funds, so this is money we've been putting aside, not something we would build into our rate study to recoup the costs on, if I understand CIP correctly. Or am I understanding that wrong?
So CIPs are part of the, are funded by customer revenues.
Okay.
So, so any of the, and, and I think that on this one, Dave, if you can clarify, I, I believe that the decorative piece is not the full, the 2 million, they have to be replaced anyway. Is that correct?
Yeah, this was a combination of material costs for, you know, we got quotes on the standards, and then we also got quotes on foundation replacements.
Okay.
There was kind of to be some engineering costs done to make sure that whatever light standard was chosen could either possibly work if we found good foundations, or if we had to have some new ones. So we accounted for foundation-
So the, the cost is slightly higher simply because of the age of what is there and how deteriorated they already are, and the need to replace them no matter what, and some of that cost built into it, no matter what we choose to put there is going to have a high cost because of the outdated bases and the corrosion.
Correct.
Okay, all right. It's, it's really important, given the cost and the idea that it's beautification, to also understand that there is a need, we need to do these upgrades, and so when we go to consider it, I don't, I, I don't want to shy away from something that's this expensive when it has a potential life. I don't want to see it as long as 30 or 40 years, but it has a life to it, and we're making an investment in improving the community, especially on our major thoroughfare, so that, that I did want some clarity on. Any other questions? Councilmember Cordova.
No, I just wanted to add a comment to this particular item. Thank you for your presentation, by the way. I've seen some of these, not here in this community, but outside of this community, I've seen some actually topple over because of age or, or corroded foundations, and so we don't want to start seeing that happen on our streets, so. corroded foundations. And so we don't want to start seeing that happen on our streets. So.
Councilmember Ball.
I completely agree. And I think something, it should be pretty obvious, but adding additional illumination where people are walking, I don't know if you ever drive down H or Ocean, there are spots where the light doesn't really reach. So illuminating and adding safety, I think that's, that's a major consideration for me. It is expensive, but you know, if we do get to keep it for 30 years, that, the yearly cost isn't that much, but yeah, something to consider.
I, I don't know that we get to keep it, but I think in our history, we've made things last a whole lot longer than a lot.
Our track record is.
Right. And I think that goes to our electrical department, right? You guys do a really good job of trying to maintain what we do have. So when we make investments, I think we get a lot longer life out of them than we would if we were contracting out with somebody else overseeing it. Councilmember Ball.
One more quick question. And again, I'm not trying to dig too much into anything, but how, in terms of the, you know, I, I get the sense that there's priorities, you know, like this is first priority versus the fifth priority. But in terms of the critical, how close we are to critical mass with some of this infrastructure, aging infrastructure, is, is the list or the priorities, is that in list of, is that in this, is that parallel with the risk or some of the, the issues that are most important?
Are you speaking directly to the decorative light standards or just everything?
The, the whole list of electrical.
Yeah, no, there was, there was a different PowerPoint where they were prioritized. And I think, yeah, I, I think it didn't get queued up. So, yeah, we, we have a list, it was prioritized and I, I went back and forth as through it. Like I said, number one priority is new development, residential, commercial, and then it's maintenance things, and then 4 KV conversion, and then so on. And obviously, these are towards the end of our priority spectrum.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions before we go to the next department? All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Dong Hyun-Chan, Waste Water Superintendent. The Waste Water Division is responsible for protecting public health and environment for our communities by providing high-quality wastewater collection, treatment, and biosolage handling services in an effective, efficient, safe, and responsive manner. We provide the wastewater pretreatment, wastewater collection, wastewater treatment, and regulatory compliance service. Through the 2021 and 2022, we, our accomplishment is the, we replace approximately 8,600 feet of gravity sewer pipeline and we treat about 1 billion gallon of wastewater with 99% BOD removal and 99% ammonia reduction. And we pro- we produced Class B biosolage and housed 1,494 tons of biosolage to the contracted, the composting site. Also, we improved the both sludge dredging and discharging pipeline and all three secondary clarifiers. Actually, the, I prepared a CIP list. The, for the collection side CIP, we have the upland sewer lift station improvement and Liverpool Park sewer lift station improvement and West Central Avenue sewer pipeline manual replacement. Also, the headwork improvement and perimeter fencing and security improvement and shaft flow level and epoxy coating in the maintenance building. Also, the, for the another CIP, purchasing of the Brown Bear aerator and compact tractor loader for the biosolage handling. Another CIP list is the biosolage de-watering equipment and emergency holding basin liner and aeration control improvement and six-inch mobile trash pump purchasing and abandoned structure demolition and fluid monitoring station improvement and driving bed pavement. And last one is the wastewater treatment and collection master plan study. Okay. Do you have any question?
Councilmember Ball.
Sure. Thank you for your presentation and for the list. I was just kind of going through this and maybe you can elaborate, if you don't mind, elaborating on the need for the master study. Again, that is, will, why do we need that and will that educate us about some things in the future? Will that help us save some money? Maybe you can tell us a little bit more about that.
The priority of the, making priority list of the CIP is the very important. Also, the project management is very important for the efficiency of the, to do the, this CIP. So to do that, the, we need the wastewater treatment and collection master plan study to make efficient the project management and then make the priority. And then we can estimate the total more accurate number of the cost estimation.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Any more questions for wastewater? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Keith Quinlan with the Solid Waste Division. Going to briefly go over the capital improvements for the Solid Waste Division. We have three categories. We have Solid Waste Administration, the landfill, and the Collections Division or Sanitation Division. For the capital improvements for the administration, we have a feasibility study that we're going to need to conduct. And the feasibility study will help us to determine the direction solid waste goes in this, in the future for the city. There are various options, including expansion of the landfill, closure of the landfill, once it is, does reach capacity, building of a transfer station to transfer the waste to another landfill, or to look at alternative disposal options, one of those being a direct haul from the city to a regional landfill, which would likely be Santa Maria. So the first item is a feasibility study to, to look at the future of solid waste here in the city. Second option is city expansion. We have some areas of the city, the Y River View Terrace, Bailey Ave expansion, and being prepared for those expansions, which would include additional collection vehicles, additional collection personnel, and additional containers for each of the new homes and/or businesses. Bless you. The landfill capital improvements, there are a number of things here. A few of them are equipment, and I'll go over those first. We have a TARP machine to cover the daily waste. We have an aging TARP machine that we're, we're continuing to utilize and Band-Aid and put together, but we do need a new TARP machine to cover the waste. And we can use two TARP machines to cover the waste daily, thus saving soil and landfill capacity. The other item is loader attachments, and that's a grapple bucket and forks for our loader. And then a landfill excavator is needed for day-to-day operations. The photo shows a rented excavator that we use to process green waste. We can use that to move gas lines, clean out, dig out basins, and other items. Landfill gas collection wells are going to be needed. As we fill the landfill, the gas collection well is put in place. We continue to expand the well up as we fill the waste. All that waste in the middle is no longer capturing the methane, so we're going to have to replace or expand our well field. In addition, we, I'll leave it at that. We have paving for, that's needed at the landfill. That's an ongoing issue out there. And we have an item for stormwater assistance as the project continues to make sure that we implement that correctly. And the last item is a landfill trailer for an employee break room. Currently, they utilize our scale house and we do have an older break room at what we call our big house at the landfill for employees. Next item is sanitation or collections in the capital improvements there. We're requesting roll-off trucks. Our roll-off trucks are very, very old. In fact, they're old converted garbage trucks that have been converted to have rails to collect the large boxes. We use these trucks for material movement, especially at the landfill, but we also do that in our sanitation yard. There is a request for two vehicles. Collection vehicles, which was also brought up in the earlier presentation, is, are needed. We have longer lead times to obtain vehicles. In the past, it would take us approximately six months after a purchase order was created to obtain a vehicle. And now it's taking anywhere from a year to two years to get a collection vehicle. We're requesting fencing for additions and repairs, both at the landfill and also at the sanitation in our public recycling drop-off yard. We have some illegal dumping out there and we'd like to consider having that recycle drop-off facility opened during operating hours as opposed to 24/7. We have a sanitation yard roof replacement. We had a repair a number of years ago and it held up for a number of years, but it is in time or in need for replacement. We also requesting a pressure washer, a mobile unit, and this can be used for both the landfill sanitation and for graffiti abatement. That's all I have. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Is the pressure washer a replacement for a current pressure washer?
We have had some previous pressure washers that have now been dispositioned. So there is, there is a need there. We do have a permanent based unit at our sanitation yard for vehicles and equipment.
All right. And some of these items that you mentioned are part of the earlier rate study discussion. So we have created potential funding for some of these items.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Ball?
I'm going to ask a silly question. So just thinking out loud that we've got the landfill closing in 10 years, I can imagine a few people saying, well, why the heck do we need to spend any of this money on anything at the landfill? Maybe you can elaborate on the ongoing need and that's still sometime out in the future, but.
Yes. So, yeah, the, the landfill life, it, it has a limited life, capacity life. The requirements of the landfill, as was touched on earlier by Councilmember Starbuck, is that the state mandates certain requirements for jurisdictions and including our landfill. We have multiple regulatory bodies, including Regional Water, Air Pollution Control District, the County, State Cal Recycle, that we have to adhere to the various regulations while open and while closed. Landfills continue. In the past, there's been a 30-year estimate on life or responsibility after a landfill is closed. I think they're looking at that more longer term now. We do have a closure fund for that, but these expenses and items have to be put in place at the, to operate the landfill and in its closure as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. One more quick question. So there is an item here that talks about landfill stormwater improvements, $145,000. That's maybe different than the six, $7 million price tag for something else, but it has the same, same title. Can you explain the difference between those two items?
Yes, that item would be for consultant work if needed as the project finalizes and any other needs that may arise along the way to have funding there for whatever may come about.
Awesome. I appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Solid Waste Division?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, staff, public, I am Richard Grasik, Broadband Services Administrator, and we have a few requests for the next budget cycle. The, what's going on? Okay, the first one that we have is the voicemail server replacement. This is a physical box in the computer room. The, the current one was installed in May of 2015. It's running on Microsoft Server 2012 and IT would like to have these obsolete server OSs taken out of service. And we're looking at a replacement that should be Server 2022, which is the current version, and to replace that is about $25,000. Our priority number two is to replace the customer service vehicle, which is a 2006 Ford Ranger. It's had numerous breakdowns. Fleet would like to see it be gone too. Our current CS, CSFT who uses it is pretty good about making sure that he checks the oil and makes sure that it's ready to drive around town as such. But at the same time, there's a lot of upkeep on that. And then the other part is just with the improvements of our billing system and our AMR, AMI system and everything, there is the desire to have MDCs in all the customer service vehicles and a Ford Ranger is too small to put a computer in the passenger seat. Priority number three is to replace the KPEG transmitter housing. KPEG went on the air in June of 2015 and it was done pretty much on a shoestring budget, actually no budget. And it currently is using a fiberglass housing that used to be for a transformer. So electric said, you know, hey, yeah, we have this over here. And it's like, yeah, can we use that? So that's what we have our transmitter up on the hill on. So what we want to do is we want to replace that with a stainless steel unit that would have air filtration and climate control on it, extending the life of our equipment up there. And it's also big enough too. The intent is to be able to house the SCADA equipment for the water reservoir up there that they're wanting to install as well. And then priority number four is to do a generational change out on the cameras that are here in the council chambers. These were installed in July of 2016 and essentially we're looking at a generational change. Like all computer and digital equipment, it does have a finite lifespan to it. So we'd like to get it changed out before we have any failures with it or anything. And then the other point is that when we do that, that will complete our HD migration. As you know, we've been constantly upgrading the broadcast that we've been doing. And this is like the last missing piece to finish the HD migration. And those are about $16,000 to replace all five of them. And those are my requests and my things that I have on my list. So if there's any questions or anything, be happy to answer them for you.
Sure. Councilmember Ball.
I'm not going to ask a question of every person, I promise. But I had one quick question just for fun. Will the council cameras potentially have filters and skin smoothing filters for those of us? of us that have wrinkles? I'm just kidding. Thank you for your presentation.
We can work on that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next up, water.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sean Ryan. I'm your Water Division Superintendent. I'm here to review our capital improvement projects for the 2325 budget. So, to start with our mission statement for the Water Division, to produce, treat, distribute an adequate supply of safe drinking water to our citizens in Long Lake, to foster a working environment with our customers and coworkers that furthers an atmosphere of courtesy, integrity, safety, and quality service provision. So, here's a basic overview of our eight requested CIPs for the next two years. I'll be going through them in order of priority as our, as my predecessors did. So, to start with, we have our emergency bypass building refurbishment. So, our bypass building was constructed in 1962 for the purpose of allowing water to bypass certain portions of our treatment system in the event of failure to allow the continued production of drinking water to the customers. The bypass building has not been available for service in the case of emergencies in over 20 years. It's been outlined in our recent vulnerability study and emergency response plan in 2021 to be addressed for refurbishment for future availability. We also had our last sanitary survey inspection from the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water in 2022, where they specifically cited the bypass building refurbishment being required by the state moving forward and should be in place before our next inspection in 2025. Our water distribution mainline replacement. This is a 100-year schedule cycle to replace the entire 140 miles of distribution mains. The first stage of the project was focusing on removing the remaining cast iron mains, which were susceptible to catastrophic failures and damage to property. We're currently in Phase Two with four remaining fiscal years of upgrading our current four-inch mains to six-inch mains to meet minimum fire flow demands for the state of California. So, the Water Division has six reservoir storage tanks that are all due for internal, external coating, as well as continued annual maintenance and inspections. Entering a long-term annually renewable asset management program will allow the city to bring all six tanks back to like-new condition and maintain them in that state for a lower cost than we currently can do internally or through one-time purchase orders through contractors. This also removes liability of the city for any future damage, both natural and man-made that may occur to the tanks while in the asset management program, as well as any future regulatory mandates from the state for drinking water compliance will be the responsibility of the asset management company to upgrade as well. So, our picture here is showing our multi-leveled chemical building at the water treatment plant, which was constructed in 1962. It is still equipped with the original plate glass windows. This is a severe danger to our employees if these windows were to break or fall from the building. The upgrade to tinted safety glass windows will remove the safety hazard, allow staff to fully close the building to outside animals and dust, and improve insulation of the building during extreme temperature and rain events. Well, number two, it was constructed in 1964. It is in an underground vault close to a residential entryway and due to the poor production after the last rehabilitations and the increased safety concerns of its design and location, we are officially decommissioning the well and removing the production well and underground vault from service. So, our AMR, our advanced meter reading system. The current system is just, has just over 10,000 customer meters that are all coming up on their 15-year life expectancy. The replacement is being done before the current meters start to fail to minimize under-registering and revenue loss. Updated meters will also reduce missed reads from the system and increase our effectiveness of our leak detection programs. Our current maintenance section has two small working areas and no other protected designated areas to work on large equipment or projects. Consolidation to a single large maintenance shop for added workspace for large projects out of the elements would greatly increase efficiency, as well as tracking for tools and parts inventory. And then, our last CIP is our electric work cart. So, the current maintenance staff is comprised of four technicians with one designated maintenance vehicle with onboard toolboxes. In the event of an off-site maintenance work, such as at the wells, the reservoirs, or the pumping stations, this removes the maintenance section's ability to get tools and equipment safely and efficiently to work sites inside the water treatment plant. An electric work cart will allow the technicians to have multiple working groups in action simultaneously in different areas without a need for a second full-size work truck. And that is our projects for the Water Division. Any questions?
Just congratulations on, on making sure that things built in the 1960s have been continuing to function well. So, again, I'm happy to see some, some replacements and some maintenance issues being addressed. So, thank you for those proposals. I want to say that one or two of your requests may be missing from the CIP book. There was, maybe it's named something different. It was the AMR system being replaced. I don't see it in the online version. So, it just, just was a question because I was trying to follow along and document. So, I just happened to notice that and none of the broadband stuff was listed online.
So, the broadband stuff is, is in there through, in a couple of different funds?
Okay. Okay. So, that's why it's not as a single item? And this one, maybe it's named something differently?
I can double-check on that to see if, if it just didn't make it in.
Okay.
What is the, the, do you remember the price point, the cost on that?
On which one?
The AMR that she's saying that was not in there? Some, we, if it, if it is a capital outlay?
Yeah.
Then, it isn't in the CIP book?
Okay.
And so, it, it, so, for example, the pressure washer?
Right.
Wasn't in there because it's a-
So, that helps explain some of the things I was hunting for to try and make notes on?
Correct.
That helps. All right. So, if it's, if its funding isn't directly out of CIP and it's coming from another area, it might be under another area in the main budget book?
So, the, the CIP, what we're talking about now are the capital improvement programs?
Right.
Is, is not, I just want to make sure that we all understand that, that we're not talking about the, the four, the Fund 424 CIP. That is a separate fund. This is not coming out of any of that.
Okay.
All of this is money that is being budgeted out of each of these divisions and departments.
Okay.
If it is a bolted-down project that is capital-related or a vehicle, it's in the book. If it is something that is not bolted down or is more of a repair, then it's just in the budget separately on, as a separate line item.
Okay. That helps.
Thank you.
For some of the things that might be missing or might be in other places.
Yeah. I think I noticed some of them that they have up there.
Yeah.
They're capital outlays, we call it. They're not, they won't be in the publication, but they're being funded.
Right. Okay. And that will be one of the ongoing questions I had, but in the moment, I was trying to find what the cost of the AMR was and couldn't, couldn't see it. So, that was why I was looking for clarity, so.
With that one, this well, that's a five-year fiscal cycle. That will be stretching that. So, it will begin with the second fiscal year of the next budget cycle and then, we'll be extending for four fiscal years after that.
Okay. So, it's a multi-year phased plan? That helps with clarity as well. Okay. Any other questions for the Water Division? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, is that everybody? All right. So, any, I just wanted to make, see if there's any questions about the utility piece of it. What I was planning on doing at this point is to look, transitioning into some of our general fund, capital improvements that we've been able to fund through the general fund, as well as just touch, making you aware of some of the CIPs that are unfunded, that we're, we're going to have to defer to future years.
Okay. So, really quickly, before we use, leave utilities, given what you just said, are there any of these projects that if we authorize them, will result in a change to either rate studies we've already done or are about to do and impact them in a major way? Because I know we've got rate studies going on for electrical and all, all of them.
Right.
And so, choosing these, if we choose them, how, how massive will it change potentially rates? And so, that, that, that is a concern moving forward.
So, when we do rate studies, we look at what it costs to do business.
Right.
And all of these that have been mentioned tonight are costs of business. Sorry.
She's trying to look at me and not-
I'm trying to, I'm trying to walk, walk-
You don't have to look at me as long as you speak into the mic.
Oh, well, so, the short answer is yes, it could impact rates.
Okay.
The, we have to maintain our structure and our infrastructure and that's part of what is evaluated during a rate study. A lot of these items are known or have been known and so, for solid waste, for example, those capital projects or the majority of those were included in the rate study already. And when we come back in three years, there may be additional ones that weren't originally evaluated, that then would be evaluated in the next rate study. And so, for, for the, for the utilities, these CIPs do impact rates eventually.
Okay. And I just think that it's important to make that clear, that these are ongoing issues we need to address and some we have put off for quite a long time and need to begin addressing and are doing it in phases and that it might affect rates, but that there is reason to consider them. So, I just want to be transparent with the community. So, thank you for answering that question.
And I just want to make it clear to that right, as of right now, the, all of the CIPs for utilities that have been presented tonight, when you look at the budget, the ones that are saying in 2024 are in the 2024 budget.
Okay.
So, it's not an addition. It's, these have already been included in-
They've been implemented in it and it's part of the budget numbers we're looking at.
Correct.
Okay. All right. That, that's the only question I had regarding this portion. Any other council questions regarding the Utility Division before we move on? All right. Seeing none. If we could turn the air conditioner down just a little bit, we're all sitting up here freezing. So, given the facilities manager is sitting next to the AC, if you could turn it down ever so lightly, so we stop chattering our teeth up here, I would appreciate it. Okay. Kristy, back to you for general fund and what's funded and what is not funded.
So, I put, I gave, I handed this out to each of you, this, I don't have a, a presentation for it. It was also out on the, on the table in, in the lobby. And this is just a quick summary of all the CIPs that we would have been able to fund this year through, and, and next fiscal, so this budget cycle, through the general fund. This is something new. We, up until this year, really haven't had the ability to fund capital improvements through the general fund. We, we are in a unique position this year to be able to do that and I'm grateful to be able to address some of the deferred maintenance that we have had over many years. And so, some of the things that we are able to do, I just want to point out, this is where the police body cameras, for example, are coming in. The CAD RMS system, which if you look at the line, that's, it's about two, about halfway down the page, it says CAD RMS. You'll notice that for fiscal year 2024, it's blank and that's because we're just looking at the general fund portion. We are looking at a grant for the initial cost, which is the 24, 24 cost, and then, the remaining of that is the ongoing costs for the CAD RMS system. We're looking at replacing many, several vehicles that are past end-of-life that, so, for example, a new code enforcement truck. Now that we have a code enforcement officer, he needs a way to be able to get around and do his essential duties. Looking at replacing the HVAC system, library services, we'd already talked about this one. We're getting a grant and the match amount of $200,000 is coming out of the general fund. And so, those are just a couple of highlights. If you have any questions on these, please ask and otherwise, we'll move on to the unfunded.
I think most of the things that are funded have been part of prior presentations from general fund divisions. So, that's helpful to see those there and then, for a few that were mentioned tonight and, and where they are. So, I don't have any questions. Does any of the staff have any about the funded areas? Okay. Seeing no questions, move on.
Okay. And then, the, the bottom half of this page, it summarizes the projects that are unfunded. You can see, we have a lot in Parks and Rec and a lot of the reason why we put, it, put down projects that we know that we can't fund, but we put them in our, our CIP program because we've identified them as important projects that we would like to be able to fund, that we're working towards, but that we're also hopeful that maybe we can find some grant funding for them. And so, by putting them in our capital improvement program book, it makes it more accessible to be able to apply for a grant. And so, we have Parks and Rec. We have some, some police service, like the Mobile Command Center, that's something that we are going to have to push to future years. Some of the, the facilities projects, for example, we, we're able to fund a kitchen upgrade for the fire department in one of their stations, but not in both. And so, we're just making some choices in how we can best serve the community with our capital improvements, as well as make sure that our staff have the equipment that they need to do their jobs, but also doing it within our means.
So, some of these unfunded are going into the program simply so that we have them prepared as shovel-ready programs for potential grants or appropriations like we have in the past, but haven't had as many available to submit because they weren't vetted and approved.
That's correct. And one of the great things about this, this new software that we have is that we're going to be able to kind of keep track of those as they come along. So, if there are additional capital improvement programs that Parks, you know, has a, has this great idea or maybe some of our electrification programs, we can add those throughout the year and continue to build this, this document. And so, that's kind of an exciting thing.
Okay. Any questions about the unfunded portion? All right. Seeing none, we need to go to public comment on this if you're done with your presentation.
Well, there was, there was one other piece that I just wanted to-
Okay.
-point out that we are looking at, in the general fund, a, a capital improvement program to be able to build out the, the River, River Park campground. We're, we are in a position where our, we have the tax funding that we have. We, we don't, we need to look at, how can we generate additional revenue for the city in order to be able to address some of the issues that are coming up, like unfunded liability payments and being able to support growth of the city? And so, we believe that putting in both general, some general fund from the campground revenues that have come in, putting those back into the campground, as well as using some of the 424 CIP money to be able to invest in actual, in bringing all of the camp, campgrounds currently up to the new, the modern campgrounds and then expanding it, it will allow us to bring in approximately $400,000 more a year once that's done. And so, we are looking at investing some of that CIP money for that project, as well as impact fees.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Is that an enterprise fund or a general fund fund?
That's the general fund fund.
All right. It's been a mystery for a little bit. Thank you.
It, it used to be an enterprise fund. It was converted to, I think, 2017 or 18, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Somewhere in, somewhere in that budget cycle, I think you converted it away from being an enterprise.
And also, the RV project, it's been going on for about five years. We originally done the, the wiring. We upgraded from 20 amp to 50 amp service. And so, it's, we're building on each time, every year, we do a little bit more. We've done some of the campgrounds and we're hoping to finish the campgrounds, do the bathrooms and eventually get an event center, something where we can actually generate even more revenues and have more events. So, futures, good future, I think.
I will say the new spots are very nice and I like the backstop that helps give some sound barrier, as well as visual break behind them. So, anyway, if you haven't been out and seen the new spots, they are quite nice. Okay. Now, we're ready for public comment, right? Okay. If you would like to comment on anything- If you would like to comment on anything we've discussed tonight and provide input on it, you are welcome to. You can come to the podium and speak for three minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201. Did we have any written comment on this item?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, um, go for it, come on up.
You know, I, Kathy Howard, I'm a resident of Lompoc. I watched the last budget meeting, or the meeting on the second of May, took me three times on YouTube. But one of the things at the end of it that I noted that Councilman Ball said is asking if there were extra funds to support some of the programs that different groups in Lompoc put on to bring people to the city. You know, he mentioned that Santa Maria almost every weekend has something going on that's in the news and people come from various places to participate. And you know, we have organizations in our city that also put on really interesting things that need publicity and support. And if you are, the city is able to provide some of that support, that would be a good thing because it brings people in to spend money. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, seeing no one else rise and no one calling in, we'll close public comment on this and bring it back to council for any final direction to staff or questions. Councilmember Starbuck.
Kristy, it's me talking. So what, from here out, you want to approve this budget at the next meeting on the 20th. It has to be done by the 30th.
Correct.
So we've got the deadline unless we want to do a special meeting. So I guess if there's changes that anybody wants to do, they're going to have to go to you individually and Mr. Albro with something in this budget book. And then that would be discussed on the 20th and we should be ready to do the adoption.
That's correct.
Is that what-
Or, or tonight, if you have, have thought-
It's 487 pages, I got it Friday. I'm not here for the library readathon yet.
You haven't finished it yet? Come on.
Oh, no, I haven't signed up with Sarah, but, so that, that's basically the plan. That and the capital improvement aspect of it. If we've got something, then we want to get to you, it's on, so we can do it on the 20th.
And, and this is a forum right now where if there's something that you're curious if it has been funded or if it's in there, I have been living in this document for the last several weeks.
Right, the numbers are fairly correct, the verbiage is what was missing.
And so I can, I can show, I can answer any of you, I, I expect I would be able to answer your questions if you have, you know, is such and such funded.
Yeah, I will probably go over it while I'm eating my lunch at the library.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Call it reading, your minutes of reading.
Uh, real quickly, was the ability to increase the Human Service Commission's request for additional funds and expanding on some of the recreational scholarships something that was able to be placed in this budget?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
We were able to approve 20, or put in $25,000 to the human services.
Okay, and that also can be utilized for those youth scholarships, if I understood correctly?
Correct.
Okay, I see a nod from-
I'm trying to-
Community Development Director, okay. If for any reason, on June 20th, we cannot agree on approving the budget because something, we still have 10 days and could have a special meeting for clarity, just to make sure.
Correct.
Okay, I just want council to realize that if you take something to staff and it's very large, it may cause a different discussion on the 20th. If it's something that's minor, that you thought might, should be there, or may be somewhere, and then you find it. But if it's something really big, we probably need to mention it sooner rather than later, or we are going to end up with a special meeting, which is possible and not a negative, just something to consider.
So I will alert council to any significant changes. If it's a, a dollar off here, or you know, a movement from within the same fund, but from one account to another account, or little things like that, I probably will just have you look at the document on the 20th. But anything that is significant that a council member requests, I would alert you to that. And I, I would be more inclined to bring that on the 20th-
Absolutely.
-rather than putting it into the document.
Good, okay.
And then we can, we can actually go ahead and make those edits on the 20th if we, if it's agreed upon.
If there's a consensus, okay, good. And I, I'm assuming that's the benefit of this as well, is that-
Correct.
-it is a very, very live document that, that isn't like we were using where if you made a change, if, if, if you didn't hit all the places where it was connected to, it would, but this is connected enough that if you make the change, it populates it everywhere it needs to?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Again, trying to find the bonuses of, of this new technique and tool that you're using, I'm excited for, yet nervous. And, and, and I know that Councilmember Starbuck doesn't want to have to print another 487 pages. Okay, um, any questions or concerns before we go to written communications and then item two? Alright, thank you council for that discussion. Did we have any written communications that weren't otherwise discussed this evening?
No ma'am, nothing.
Alright, next we have item two that was pulled from consent calendar, adoption of resolution number 6579 parentheses 23, authorizing receipt of 2022 clean air grants for infrastructure program award from the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District to purchase solar-powered electric vehicle chargers for fleet charging at the corporate yard, and allowing use of greenhouse gas allowance proceeds to fund projects supporting fuel switching and zero emission vehicles, and approving supplemental appropriations. We have Mr. Steve Vaya, our administrative analyst, to answer any questions if we have it. Councilmember Starbuck.
Good evening.
Afternoon.
I have something I want to bring up to council. Couple of meetings ago, I'd asked about the carbon credits for reimbursement to people, the people that own the company. We did it, what did you say here, in 2020, we gave everybody $150 credit on their utility bill on these carbon credits. Well, I'd asked about it and we, I was told, well, it's illegal, we'll find something, we'll get back. All of a sudden, it shows up here as an optional source of funding for batteries and solar panels for the city yard down here. You're wanting 90,000 of it. You're getting 100,000 from somebody, but the rest of it's coming out of the carbon credits. And I just wanted to make the council aware that we do have the ability to take this $3 million in carbon credit and redistribute it to the people that own the electric company. Or we can go ahead and feed the pig at the corporate yard on an electric vehicle plug-in station and move on with it and keep it on consent. I'm just curious, what are the plans? I couldn't get an answer when I asked, but now we're using the money.
You know, the, Councilmember Starbuck, thank you for, for the comment too and bringing this up.
No, you're not thanking me, you're upset.
Oh, no, um, well, I, I, you know, I really don't have, I do not manage that, that fund, so I, I-
Somebody told you to use that fund?
I don't have any, any real, real idea of what, what their plan, what, what a plan is, or if there, there is a plan really for, for these carbon credit funds. What, what I can speak on for is, is the item, which is really, you know, this is, this is something that's fast approaching and we've, we've known and had it on, on the back burner for quite some time, is that we're, you know, these, these mandates are coming up.
Right, well, these, these mandates, but see, this is money that the people that own the utility, they could be entitled to this. Would they rather have the $150 or whatever it works out to credit? Would they rather see LED lights? Or do they want to see a portable battery charging station? You know, that's why I wanted to throw it out to the council. This is something that we can decide here, and I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Starbuck, well, well, I, I understand your argument and your concern. This is another unfunded mandate that has come down from the state that we are required to implement. And as a result, we are funding some of it through this grant and then using money that is, is able to be used for this to implement it, to not add to a rate increase, even if it is very minimal, we're using funds we've already collected that are allowable for this purpose to meet that unfunded mandate. So I, I get, I get the frustration, but we're-
Well, the frustration, Mary, is the fact that it was asked about and never answered, but now we're going and moving forward with using it. I get it, if you guys want to go ahead and start working on the all-electric fleet now and photovoltaic plates and all that, that's fine. I just think that it's something that should have been discussed with the people that own the company. That would be all of us to receive a bill and, and you know, here we are doing this. I get it, there are mandates for it, but on the other hand-
So my proposal would be that we move forward with this, and then you make a council request to specifically have that fund come back for a description of what uses can be used for it, what some of our options are, so that we as a council can have that discussion. But I think the appropriate thing to do is to make it a formal request to have it come back. And I, I know that you asked about it, I, I don't know that it was formalized last night.
Well, no, but page four lists, it, it tells you what it's, can be, the intent of what it's going to be used for right here. Four to 12 KV upgrades to geothermal facilities-
Sure.
-LED lights-
Sure.
-renewable power procurement, and a one-time distribution of proceeds.
And, or, just to elaborate, that, that list is not exhaustive. I know there's, there's more allowable uses, and I, I think that would be a reasonable request is to bring up, you know, a plan for, for the use of funds. I understand that we're going through our annual, annual reconciliation of the use of funds. So, you know, like, like it stated in the report, the four uses there, and then the one-time use has, is what city council has allowed. This is an additional allowance, or, you know, it builds upon that too, because it is, you know, the electric vehicle movement is, is coming about, the mandate, you know, listed in the report. We will have, new, new vehicle purchases will have to be electric, or 50% at least, by 2024 and 100% by 2027. And this, that only applies to class 2B or greater vehicles. That's roughly 80 vehicles that the city, and non, non-emergency vehicles are that too. So roughly 80 vehicles are affected. So that's, it's something that we will have to, have to look at using, and that's, that is a part, part of this. But, but I, I do agree that, you know, we could come back with a, a plan for the use of funds and, you know, at your, your direction, you know, use, use the funds for other projects.
Uh, Councilmember Ball.
So, uh, thank you for, for being here. I'm not sure I have a specific question, but if you feel like you'd like to jump in, maybe go for it. I have a slightly different perspective, as you all know, I'm relatively younger than a few people up here, and that doesn't mean much, other than when it comes to the future and electrification and all these fancy words in the future, yeah, it's coming. And it's coming in my lifetime, in your lifetime too. So yes, the electrification of our fleet, us being more efficient, us using the sun to power some things, yes, that resonates with me, especially when I'm sitting up here a year or two ago and there's an additional request for an additional $400,000, for what? Gasoline. We voted up here to add above and beyond the budget because gas got expensive. So of course we should be moving forward and becoming more efficient, and like lowering our costs by using things like the sun. So for me, that's, that's a no-brainer. And the only other thing that I want to say with all respect is that there was a one-time give-back of $150, and I think that's great, in a vacuum. But it also is unfortunate that for years upon years upon years, this council did not make incremental increases in the rates. So we have years, decade go by without any rates, any rate increases, no studies. It's going to be way more expensive than the $150 that people got back because of the rate increases that this council has to make because we have to play catch-up. So from my perspective, with all respect, we have to move into the future. We don't get a choice with some of these mandates. The next generation is going to be driving electric cars, whether you like them or not. And if it can save our city money by planning ahead and adopting part of the future, then we should be making those hard decisions. That's my perspective, thanks for listening.
Uh, no, you're, you're welcome to respond to that.
I was, I was just going to add on, we, we are awaiting grant results for another application we submitted. I want to say about three, four months ago. It's a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant. Roughly, we've requested roughly $350,000 to help with the plan. So a long-term investment strategy, identification of vehicles that are going to be required, and, you know, and pass that as well. Yeah, and really looking at our, at our facilities, because, you know, roughly 20 to 26 facilities have fleet vehicles at, at any given time. So, you know, the, I, you know, to build on to your point, Councilmember Ball, is that the investments in the electric capacity is really what, you know, what we should be looking at and what, what we should be planning ahead for, so, because some buildings might not be able to have it. You know, we could pop a charger here or there, and, you know, who knows, we're going to need 10, 20, 30. You know, we're going to need fast chargers, and that, that market is, you know, it's, it's still developing too. So I think this, this option really gave us the, a solution to where we, you know, we are, we are investing, we have a solution, and we can start with a slow approach while we're, while we're beginning to plan out. So that's, you know, just something that, that we're working on.
Okay, I know we already took public comment on consent calendar, but I will go ahead and open up public comment if there's anyone who would like to speak on item number two, since it's been long enough. And if you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anybody calls, I'll do another public announcement. We have, the adult basketball league is opened enrollment through the Lompoc Parks and Recs. They will be playing at the Lompoc Valley Middle School Gym on either Mondays or Wendy's, Wednesdays, beginning June 21st. Teams may have up to 10 players on a roster and must provide their own uniforms with six-inch numbers on the back of their jerseys. The cost to play per team is $525 for Lompoc residents and $550 for non-residents. The deadline to register is Tuesday, June 13th, and you can contact the Lompoc Rec Department or Anderson Rec Center in person, Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, if you want to sign up a team. Alright, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept staff recommendation for item number two and bring back a future discussion of those carbon credit dollars. Have an expanded discussion, we have new council members who may not have been on in previous years. So we better understand and provide maybe some direction about where we would like to see those funds spent in the future so that we don't necessarily have council members surprised by that. So I will add, accept staff's recommendations and bring a follow-up discussion to my request. Councilmember-
Second that.
Ball seconds, any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. Alright, here is your opportunity for the final oral commi- oral communications on any city matter for this evening. You may come to the podium and have two minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201 and have two minutes. Floor is now open.
Hello, my name is Karen Howenstein, and I'm a lifelong Lompoc Valley resident. I am here again in front of you today, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am advocating for better, safe traffic solutions for Lompoc. Again, I want to bring to everybody's attention, and those of you who remember the McLaughlin Road access across the San Diego River, we need it. I observed on this morning, the traffic in Lompoc this morning was worse than I've ever seen it, even on a Friday or Saturday. And I think it was because we had an unfortunate accident outside of town. But regardless, it reminded me of the fact that we're still sending- But regardless, it reminded me of the fact that we're still sending all of our traffic, all of our commuter traffic and all of the traffic in and out of Lompoc on Ocean and H Street. And we have a plan, and the county has a plan, to open up permanent access across the San Yenoz River. So I just want to bring that up again. And then, um, I also want to say in my remaining time that I am very proud of the relationship that my parents, Gary and Gwen Howenstein of Atlas Recycling had for decades with the city as a contractor out at the landfill. They, they were personally responsible for recycling hundreds of tons of metal that didn't end up in our landfill. So. Pick up trash.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close the final oral communications, um, for this evening and bring it back to council. We'll begin with Councilmember Cordova. Anything to report or request?
No reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Councilmember Vega.
No reports.
Councilmember Ball.
I've said enough, no reports.
All right, so I'm gonna take up everybody's time because I have lots to report out. And, and so, um, I want to thank all of you who turned out for the Lompoc, uh, Police Department's Food Fest and the Mayor's Ride for Psycho Mania. It was fantastic. The weather held out for us. We had the most food trucks I've ever seen and, um, it was a great evening. So thank you for organizing that and for all the hard work our, our police department put into connecting in a positive way with our community. And next year, I hope to have more, more than ten people on the bike ride, but it got a little cold, so I'll, I'll give you a break. Had the normal meetings with the Santa Barbara County area government. Um, there was an additional Workforce Development Board Industry Sector Roundtable that talked about what industry is needing from, um, both, uh, government and, and, uh, state, local and federal level. A presentation, I attended that and represented the, the city on that. The Northern California Power Agency that we're a member of that we have our reduced cost for electricity, um, the monthly meeting was actually held in Lompoc. So I normally travel the furthest distance for those meetings up to Roseville outside of Sacramento or further. Um, the members came here, where they were given a tour of our community. We had dinner for them out at our mission, which was a very unique experience for them. Our mission is unlike any other in, um, the state of California. And last but not least, a big thank you to Vandenberg Space Force Base because they provided a tour of, um, one of the slicks to them and the weather held out. You could actually see the oil rigs offshore, which is very unusual for this time of year that we had such wonderful weather for individuals that came and visited. They were very impressed, very appreciative and now understand how far I drive every time I go to a meeting each month. So that, that was a benefit. Um, we had a wonderful Memorial Day, um, celebration organized by our local veterans groups. And I want to thank Councilmember Cordova for joining me on that day and then Chief Master Sergeant Mosley from Vandenberg Space Force Base who gave the speech. Lompoc Leadership Valley had a graduation for their class. They're reinstituted this past year after being on hiatus due to the pandemic. And they also issued their first Dick Dewey's Award in three years to Angel Ramos. If, for those of you that know him, he ran Catholic Charities Food Pantry for years. And although he retired from doing that officially, he still spends quite a bit of his time volunteering there. So I congratulate him on being a fellow Dick Dewey's Award winner for leadership in our community. Um, couple of more things. We had, um, Future Group that is working on, um, opening possibilities for our, um, local students at Lompoc High School had their second class for customer service graduation dinner. And what was really special about this is students that had been juniors and went through their first class that came back and were mentors for this class are now graduating and numerous of them are going on to college, um, whether it's Allen Hancock or to UC San Diego or Howard University. So they are taking advantage of learning things and and going on to do more than they ever would have expected. And it was, was such amazement that myself and Councilmember Cordova attended and got to hear many of these students tell us what they were going to do next and talk about how they never would have thought they would have naked, made those next steps. So I want to take, thank the organizers of the organization, Future, all of the sponsors that supported the ongoing classes and to, um, the teachers that, um, supported them because that means we have about twenty-six more students that are not going to gangs, not going to, um, just, you know, stumble through what they might do next. They're going on to take classes at Hancock or go on to college. So we thank those that are working towards improving the lives of our youth in our community. And last but not la, at least, as mentioned at the last meeting by our fire chief, he, um, acquired the Narcan, um, boxes that have the ability to respond in an emergency. Um, all the training has occurred for those that, uh, on our staff volunteered to take that training. Thank you. All of the boxes are now installed at all of our public facilities so that if we have an opioid overdose in one of our facilities, we have the manpower and the tools in order to react to it. Um, the Project Opioid Meeting that I went to at the end of last month, um, sat, stated that some of the reduction we're seeing in the deaths is due to getting Narcan back into the community. And so we have now become a partner through our, uh, PD Department getting trained and carrying it. Our staff and our facilities having the boxes available and out into the public, um, are changing the number of deaths that might occur by being proactive. It's a bigger issue, has more complicated, um, steps we need to take, but if we can reduce harm to those experiencing these, um, overdoses and continue the education, that's half the battle. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for that. And I appreciate being able to go to the, the training myself because as we've seen in the past, we've had some emergencies in, um, city council chambers. And so I wanted to be proactive as part of that. Couple of more things. There's a Boxing Fundamentals Program that is for free that will happen at various parks throughout the summer on Saturdays. Go to the rec department, see that list. It's gonna be great. I know the gentleman that's training, he's amazing with kids. It's a great tool. An adult does need to be present, but it'll be fun. Um, there's a Princess Dance Camp. There's more information on the Parks and Rec site about that. And then there is a entire new volunteer program that is being run by the Parks and Rec for teenagers age thirteen through fifteen over the summer. So if you want to get out there and understand how to get more involved and where your help can be needed as a teen, please reach out. There are huge opportunities for our community and for our youth. And we just want to make sure you take every advantage of them, especially given it's summertime. So, thank you all. We will now adjourn this meeting until our next regular meeting at six thirty PM on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, where we will attempt to finalize the budget for the next two years.